Good morning, everyone. It is 10:30. We're going to start the budget workshop for August 5th, 2025. Notice is hereby given of a special meeting in the City of San Angelo to be held August 5th, 2025 at 8:35 a.m. Time's a little late on that one, but at McNeese South Meeting Room for the purpose of considering the following agenda items. Number one, we're calling this meeting to order. And number two, this is going to be a workshop itinerary. We'll first start with item A, discussion of matters regarding the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 budget preparation, including but not limited to general fund revenue and expenditures, enterprise funds, revenue expenditures, and other items needing council direction. Presentation made by the lady with the great voice this morning, Ms. Tina Dierski.
Thank you, Mayor.
All yours, Tina.
This first slide here is just giving you an overview of what we'll go through during the budget workshop. First off, general fund revenue expenditures and considerations, and of course, several of our enterprise funds. I'm using my computer. This next slide is kind of reminding citizens as well as those present that the Tom Green County Appraisal District sets valuations for properties within the city. And then we have three different taxing entities that set their rates as they see needed to provide for the budget, the city, the county, and the school district. Next, a reminder of property tax challenges, most of which have been mandated by the state. The 3.5% revenue cap limits the ability to increase our property tax revenue for existing properties to 3.5%. There is new legislation that is being submitted that is in an effort to actually further decrease that amount to 2.5%.
Let me stop. We have filed letters of opposition to senators and elected officials that we oppose Senate Bill 9 that looks to cap our 3.5% gain, annual gain. And I will tell people right now, if that was to go through, how that would affect our public safety and this structure here would just be, it's very detrimental, and it would be a major loss to the City of San Angelo. And so I join with all other cities within the state, our opposition to Senate Bill 9. So if you have a chance to convey that, please do.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So in reality, when we started looking at the cost of doing business and for the city to provide business, we have what we call municipal cost index, which actually shows inflationary rates for a rate for a city. And we, on average, go up about 4.5% for providing services. So when you're limited to 3.5% or even 2.5%, that's very detrimental.
3.5% is a handicap.
It is. But do 2.5%, and then you're really strapped at that point. So I just wanted to point that out.
The next challenge is the medical exemption changes, where they provided exemptions for business personal property for organizations that use medical equipment in their production. That removed $116 million from our tax roll, which equated to $800,000 per year. The homestead or circuit breaker cap provided for an exemption for properties valued under $5 million of 20%. That removed about $900,000 from our tax rolls. The over-65 freeze, that is somewhat unique to our city. Typically, school districts offer that, but back in the early 2000s, the city voted to implement an over-65 freeze. The value of that freeze this year for the property tax revenue would equate to $4.3 million, and it is on the increase. This year alone, it increased, that amount increased by 9%. The nonprofit exemptions, of course, when we have nonprofits purchase large properties and remove those valuations from the tax rolls, that's a challenge. And then, of course, the temporary exemption for flood disaster property damage. We want to remind our citizens, actually, that those that were impacted by the flood can apply to the appraisal district for an exemption. It's a temporary exemption, but it would help them this year. But of course, it will impact our general fund as well, but thankfully, it's just a temporary exemption and impact. The appraisal district has created a website strictly for those applications. Jonathan, do you have what that form number is?
The form number is 50-312, and the website for more information is sanangelflood.com.
Okay. Hang on. Okay, so existing valuations increased by 3.3% this year. New values increased by 21.8% to $110 million. And tiers values came in at $240 million, or 14.6% increase. Existing values are capped at the 3.5% currently. New values are not capped, and so that's why we show you what those values look like from year to year. Those are new properties that are added to the tax roll, and that first year, they're not capped. And then tiers values, that's just to show you the amount that, we'll come back to the general fund once the tiers sunsets. In that year, that would have equated to about $1.4 million. Reminder that sales taxes, 8.25% of that, the state receives 6.25%. The city's general fund receives 1%. Development Corporation Type B sales tax, 1.5%. And the county, 1.5%. Sales tax increased for July, 6% compared with the same month in the prior year. Our year-to-date collections are over the prior year by 3.6%, which is pretty strong growth. And we are over our revenue budget by almost $1.5 million year-to-date. This slide showing our FY '25 projected year-end and the growth over '23 and '24. For next year's budget, we're looking at budgeting flat at 100% of projected year-end. So this is just kind of showing that graphically.
So Tina, let's touch base on our aggressiveness for our budget for 2026. All right, so in conversations with staff, Daniel, Tina, we've been very, very conservative, but we have a lot of construction that's coming in 2020, the tail end of '25 and up to 2026. We're going to have all the construction at the schools through the school bond. We're going to have construction with the renovation of the Coliseum, lots of outside contractors. So it was a thought and a consensus among the group that it is very, it was very prudent and give us some opportunities to put some things in the budget. I wouldn't say to heal, but to bring things back to a level that we think is not risk. And we're going to run with the projected budget that we have here and go on. And I don't think we need to be in reserve. And if we should come into something of a shortfall, can you tell me steps we would take to amend that?
We're very focused, especially on sales tax, because this is a volatile source of revenue. But if, we look at it weekly and definitely monthly when we get those values in. If we started to have concerns about not meeting our sales tax budget into the next fiscal year, we would look at ways to cut expenditures, such as hiring freeze, travel freezes, training freezes, those kinds of things. And Daniel and I, we look at that very closely on a regular basis.
Yeah, I'd like to add that back in 2014, we were, I mean, we were expecting like a $2 million shortfall, and we caught that in our budget. We look at it on a monthly basis, and we made some quick adjustments. We ended that year in the black. And basically, the same thing here. Well, Mayor, I would admit that this is more of an aggressive projection for sales tax revenues. It's still conservative. I think if anything, it's a doable, and we definitely didn't want to, we didn't want to, didn't want to scale back and say, well, let's do 3% below. That actually would be way too conservative, and we really feel that this is achievable. But again, thank you for asking that question, but yes, we're always aware if, in fact, our revenues aren't coming as projected, we will affect our expenses to make sure that we even out.
Well, and we've dealt with some of those, like when they took Ethicon off the tax rolls and some of these things, just projections, what I've been getting. I have seen the city and council react very prudently, very efficiently, and be able to manage those things without going to the taxpayers' budget. And I would say, what you've prepared and what staff has brought forward, I see that same thing again. But I just wanted to make sure all the working constituents had a chance to hear that.
Yeah, and to touch on what Daniel said about this still being conservative, you know, you saw in the previous slide that we're seeing 3.6% growth year-to-date. That's what we typically would expect to see with sales tax, though at 100% is still fairly conservative.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, so here we're looking at an increase for property tax revenue of $2.5 million. Based on the methodology we just discussed, we're looking at an increase for sales tax of $1.4 million. Other taxes includes bingo tax, alcohol tax, and franchise fees. The main decrease that we're seeing there is related to the television franchise fees. That's, we've seen that steadily and aggressively decline over the last five or six years, and we expect that to continue, and so we're trying to be realistic with what we expect to receive for that. We do have some legislation that we're involved in that is trying to recoup, you know, that loss in revenue from streaming services, because people are moving away from cable and over to more streaming services, such as Hulu, Netflix, those kinds of things. So we're watching that very closely, trying to get that loss of revenue back, but in the meantime, we want to be realistic. Charges for services, oh, I was like, what just happened? Charges for services, that includes things like ambulance, planning permits code, municipal court fines and fees. But the biggest driver of the increase you're seeing there is the School Resource Officer Program. Our police department has an agreement with the school district to provide officers on their campuses, and so they're planning to reimburse us for those costs. We expect that to be a wash on the expenditure side, and that amount is a little less than $1.2 million.
Did you say 1.2?
Yes, I think it's 1.15.
Close enough.
Okay. And then other, the increase there is related to projections for interest income. Okay, so for public safety, again, that 1.15 is the biggest driver of the increase there. There's also an increase related to a significant increase in the ambulance revenue budget. Their budget increased by $652,000 this year. We have a third-party vendor that provides billing services for us, so anytime we see an increase on the revenue side, we're going to see an increase in correlation on the expense side for that agreement. Let's see, Public Works. The main driver of that is related to electricity. Jonathan is projecting a $200,000 increase in the general fund just related to electricity, and we are seeing cost increases of about 10% for next year. Public Services, just a slight increase there. That includes parks and rec and the swimming pool. Development Services, $58,000 there. Most of the increase there is related to software cost increase, offset by some decrease in permits and inspections. And Jonathan, is that related to personnel?
Yes, that's just related to personnel moving from one division to another.
Neighborhood Services, the main increase there was related to social services, related to full-time salaries and retirement. And I think that was related to some, the same type of thing, moving employees from one fund to another, mostly related to reductions in grant funding. Health, just a slight increase there in the health department. Government is increasing due to, I have a note on that one, Jonathan. You want to look that one up? Okay, Admin Services, the main increase there is for human resources, the 292,000 due to retiree insurance premium increases. There's an $88,000 increase in contract services for the appraisal district's contract, and that's the main changes related to the admin services line. Transfers out is decreasing. We are proposing a change in the way we support Fort Concho and the sports complex. We're looking at providing more funding from the State Office Building to support the fort, and we're also looking at more funding from hotel tax to support the sports complex, and you'll see those changes on the next slide.
Is it, we have to wait till the end, or can I ask a question on this? About a month ago, when the food part for the meals with senior citizens, and they had those two satellite offices, they're at Oak Grove Senior Living and then Christian Village. When they got their funding cut in about 10 days prior to when it was actually going to go into effect, we picked up that, that slot, that gap, stopgap measure, and I believe it was about $8,000. I don't know which of these departments that would have come from, but that would be a one-time, a one-time only expenditure. So I don't, I don't know if that accounts in the neighborhood services or just what budget department it is, but we could, I mean, that's a, may not seem like a lot of money, but it is. I just want to make sure that that, that we didn't go over budget because of that one measure that we, that we took.
I can answer that. We did not. We, Carl addressed that from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, and sometimes they have savings from when positions are not filled, because we're lacking employees, we can't fill positions. So they were able to take some of those cost savings for the year and cover that expense within the existing budget. And it was a one-time, this current year we're in, they were able to cover it.
Okay.
So it has nothing to do with any of these things.
Okay, good. I'll stay in my lane. You tell me when I can.
No, Mayor, we actually asked about that yesterday, asked the same question. That was good. It's, that was a time where the city stepped up and covered a hole and a gap, and it was, it was a great thing we did, but that.
And that was in District 6, right.
But that was a good question, Mayor.
This next slide is just showing that transfers outline that we talked about on the last slide in more detail. We transfer out some money from general fund as matching for grants. We transfer out $2 million for equipment replacement. That goes into Fund 501 to replace things like police vehicles, ambulances, parks, vehicles, any, any general fund-type department. Fairmount Cemetery, some increase there just related to benefits. Texas Bank Sports Complex, again, a decrease there, mostly related to supporting that more from hotel tax. Fort Concho, decrease there, mostly related to more support from the State Office Building. And then that transfer out for stormwater is related to mowing in our right-of-way. Any questions there? No. Excuse me. Okay, this slide is just showing that 50% of our general fund revenue does come from property tax, 25% from sales tax, 7% from other taxes, which includes the bingo alcohol and franchise fees, 12% from charges for services, and 6% from other sources, such as interest and indirect cost. The expenditures by department, 59% of our general fund expenditures in this proposed budget will go towards public safety, 12% towards Public Works, 6% for Public Services, and 23% for other, which is mostly admin-related services, such as legal, HR, finance, purchasing, those types of things.
Tina, well, that expenditure by department, I know we've got a lot of software improvements coming in 2025. Is that where that falls into? It's kind of that category by department as expenditures?
If it falls under the general fund, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, again, I want to point out that 59% again goes to public safety. So the amount we collect around our property taxes is not even enough to cover public safety at this point, and that was always a goal in the past. We're at 50% revenue and 59% for public safety. So any drop, 3.5% limitation, or 2.5% again, just makes the situation worse, and it's going to make that expand out further, so just want to point that out.
Okay, so funding requests that we've already included within the proposed budget include that fire department, third-party vendor contract increase, some police software package increase related to real-time crime tracking, the development services software package increase, the increase for the appraisal district, as well as for retiree insurance. Any questions on any of those?
The retiree insurance, I brought up this question previously, that's, that's a segment that only retirees get. Current employees do not get that, but we're, that's becoming a sector. And can you explain when they're in that group and then when they fall out of that group? So what we're expecting this fund and how we expect that to wave?
This specific increase is related to retirees who were hired before the year 2000. I believe there's also a tenure date with that.
I think Kimberly was walking up.
Yeah, and then it's also related to the over-65 portion as well.
Good morning. Kimberly Holly, Assistant Director of HR and Risk Management. Jonathan's correct. It would be for employees who were hired prior to the year of 2000. So we do have some current staff still eligible for that benefit, excuse me, but the majority of those have already retired.
When do they move out of this fund?
Never.
Okay.
When they die.
Right, so I mean, but as, this, this fund over a period of time will decrease, but it's going to get a peak. Do we have a time where we think it'll max out the maximum number of people that will be in this fund? And then when can we see?
Right, so we only have 66 current employees who are eligible for this benefit, and that number's several months old, so it might be a few less at this point. So once those 66 retire, we will be topped out. That's as many who can join our plan.
But that includes those that are retired and those that are still eligible, correct?
Those that have retired and the 66 that are still eligible. If they retired as a general fund employee, you will continue to see that cost here.
Okay.
You will see the full amount in the health insurance fund as we go later through the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Kimberly.
Yes, sir.
On this next slide, we have some opportunities for one-time funding. A couple of these you saw in a budget amendment earlier in the presentation, but these are just recommendations, recommendations from staff on how we could fund some one-time needs from some of our departments, strictly up for council discussion and direction. We have funds available in excess fund balance in the general fund of about $4.4 million, as well as marginal projected sales tax revenue of almost $1.5 million. Most of these requests came from target increase requests that were submitted by departments for needs. And when we go through those target increase requests with Daniel, we try to look at things that could be funded with one-time funding, not necessarily needed in their annual operating budgets. So this is a proposal for that, again, up to, up to council direction. The police department has requested a portable building for the amount of $250,000. I know when we were discussing this with some of the council members previous to this meeting, there were some questions on what that looks like, what that includes, and that kind of a thing. So I think Chief Griffith is here, if y'all have questions for him on what he's wanting to do there.
Yeah, let's let Chief Griffith, if you'll kind of come up and go down this itemized list here for us, give us a brief synopsis, and then if council has any questions.
Yeah, I want to say thank you out of the council for working through this. I know it's a lot of stuff going on, a lot to work through, so I commend you for doing this. When it comes to the portable building, the, we are in a space of a size of a department for about 45 men. We have a total allotted number of 174, which I'll be asking to go back up to 180. That's another, another line item. We, we need that staff and the ability to be in one place. We're fragmented across, all across the place. This would be the ability to put a portable building next to us, to limp by, to get to where we're about four or five years down the road, looking for an actual new police department, maybe some sort of government bill that's together of some sort. That, that will give us the ability to do that. And then with it being a portable building that can be moved, my idea would be Lake Operations or to the Lake Police Department, so that building's not going to be a waste. We found one out of Colorado, so it looks pretty appealing to the eye, has an additional support structure, because they're used to the snow up there, and we think that we can, we can make that work. And I'll address any questions on the portable building.
But it does have residual value. We're going to pay the quarter upfront, and then when we're done, we still have other ways to use that.
Yes, sir. And I think it will work, it would be wise for the city in regards to have that, because there's going to be plenty of other buildings inside of our infrastructure that's going to need to be replaced, and so it would provide us the ability to have temporary housing for those to be remodeled, added on to, or whatever. This is not a, not a net loss.
All right, does it tie into any of your evidence?
Yes, that's the purpose of, we would be removing our entire patrol division to make room for evidence. Right now, we have evidence stored in 15 different locations across the department, and we're, we'd be working to consolidate that down to three.
Awesome.
Travis, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How, how large a building are we talking?
The one we're looking at is just under 4,000 square feet. I think it's, it's slotted at 29,000, I'm sorry, 2,900 square feet. That'd be very large.
It's on one story.
Oh, yeah, single, single build. We have a parking lot to put it in. It would provide us the ability to, again, we're putting, we're putting Band-Aids on bullet holes right now. There's no other way around it. The other option is to buy a bunch of seed containers. That's really problematic for evidence and what you're doing with that, and it's a, we've looked at every angle we can. This is the simplistic, and I think it's the best approach to meet both needs with one purchase.
If we ever got into, got in a bind and we had another, another area that needed that space, would, what if you're in there? Where do we, where do the other needs go?
Well, I really, I believe we can all, I don't want to speak for y'all, but I can tell you that the infrastructure of the police department, you know, from 1962, prior to President Kennedy's assassination, for a building of, built for 75 people, which included a municipal court and a jail, we're, we're at capacity. It's, I think it's listed on number one on one of the priority lists for infrastructure. I think that needs to be the priority moving forward, and that this building would have the ability to be used outside of the life of, of the current building. I can't speak to what, you know, what-if factor, but I would think that there's lots of different things we can do with that building afterwards.
The city as a whole, too?
Yes, ma'am, 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Harry, did you have a question?
Just going to make a comment, since the next four items belong to the police, I would prefer that the chief stays right where he is.
Sure.
Why don't you walk through them, Chief?
Sure.
Hey, real quick.
Joe?
The portable building, is that finished out, that price?
Yes, sir. It is currently finished out. We're looking at several options, and we're going to look at the most, the most cost-effective. And we have two different locations on the property. I didn't want to do this, I'm going to be honest with you, but there's really not much of an option. We know that it's going to take money that we don't have, and whether that means a bond or something else to build a police department in the future. We have to have something that, number one, shows our employees that we value, and then number two, that we can make some space that's usable and to get us limping down the road.
Yeah, no, I totally understand you need it. It's just making sure there's not going to be an additional cost to, to finish it out or anything, but no, that's good.
Yes, sir. Anything else on the portable building? Okay. So this is police district mapping. We haven't had a strategic actual company come in and redistrict our maps based off of geographical areas, so like a river and our, that runs through town, and then also the Houston Hart. Those make geographical barriers that prevent you from being able to respond appropriately. We're, we're asking for that to be paid for, to have a company that comes in and looks at our calls for service, it looks at where the priority calls are at, and then they, they use the geo data to be able to come in and redistrict as appropriate for the closest best response times. So that's pretty straightforward, and I'll take any questions on that.
You said, you said redistrict. Does that basically mean you'll station officers in those areas that are kind of spread out throughout the city?
Yes, sir. Right now, our, our police districts, which would be kind of like what we see with fire stations, right? There's different fire stations that have different mappings. Ours are currently very large, and so we're looking to make that a little bit more succinct and bring that to an area that's manageable, and try to keep the same person, the same district, to be able to build relationships, keep them to a place where they can respond quicker. But we need that, we need somebody that comes in that they do this for a living to be able to say, hey, we're going to, we're going to separate basically the districts based off of those geographical areas and plus the amount of calls for service. Okay. So we've been going through trying to bring the San Angelo Police Department up in a more professional manner, and one thing we've found is that there's, we haven't had an audit of our evidence that we can find at all. We've talked to some retired officers and tried to find why that is important, is that we have homicide investigations from, you know, 40 years ago. We have cases that are still open that, that we, we need to make sure that we have tracked all this evidence. So we're looking at bringing in a company to audit us, to make sure that we can say, hey, all this stuff is in the right place. And we would like that to go and coincide at the same time as us moving those evidence down to three spots. So that way, we're, we're taking out two birds with one stone. In that, we could, we could address any shortcomings, which I'm hoping and praying, we have some great staff, that we're not going to have any, but at least to know, hey, this was the issue and worked through that. So that's the idea behind to have the third party come in and... So that's the idea behind to have the third party come in and, um, reduce that as well. And so that's one of the things that they can do, is they can reduce the amount of evidence, uh, based off of going through item by item, line by line.
So let me ask a question. As far as evidence, any, as, as things have progressed and technologies increase, can any of that go digital where you don't have to create that storage space? And it's, I mean, a picture of me holding a bag is something I shouldn't have versus having the bag. I mean...
Which we've already, and I think y'all, we've already really done that with our digital evidence. We store everything through evidence.com, uh, which is really becoming a lot. But when it comes to, uh, physical evidence, there's no way around it. Um, one thing that we're trying to work through options and researching is personal property, which is our biggest, our biggest hurdle, is that people will get arrested and they will never come and get their stuff. We have to get an order to go through, and they've abandoned property, and they'll be old. Well, I'll go and tell you, we're, we're dealing with some rodents and some raccoons that are trying to get in and get the food and stuff like that into our current storage spaces for that. So it's, uh, it's, it's not a good spot, so we're trying to address that. Uh, any way we can size down, we're going to. The one thing that I think would make the most sense is records. Uh, we can digitize some of those records and bring those down, but right now, it would take years for us to work on that project.
All right. Thanks, Griff.
Yes, sir. Any questions on, on the external audit? So police ammunition, um, when we first took over, this was, uh, miniscule in the grand scheme of things. And this is a perishable skill, right? So for you to carry a gun, there's no other employee, I've done lots of different jobs for municipalities. There's no other employee in the city that has more, um, liability-laden job than a police officer. We can take people's civil rights, right, legally, and if we mess that up, then we would do it illegally, and that's a problem, right? That goes into what the court's role as a seizure of that person when you shoot them, right? So we want to make sure that all of our, our officers are equipped to do the job that they need to do at any given time. And we've seen shootings all around the Concha Valley, Abilene, uh, some of the counties to our south and, and to the west. Uh, at any given time, this will occur. Um, and so we want them to be prepared. This is incremental. Everything I put forth in the budget that I presented to y'all guys is, is a, is a need. And I didn't, I didn't use car salesman this. That's a straightforward approach to say this is what we need to get this job done. In this regards, we're stepping in. When we look at our comparables, and I've already shared this with you to, to some of the, uh, the closest cities in Texas that match up to San Angelo, we're millions and millions of dollars below, seven in, in most regards. Uh, their, their functioning budget versus the functioning budget of us. I didn't come in and request seven million dollars, right? I came in and said, hey, this is what we need to get by. We're gonna phase in some ammunition, because I don't think it's financially responsible to come in and request giant amounts of money. And we did a lot of one-time, working with Daniel, and I appreciate his work on this. Uh, ammunition is another one that, we, we need to phase that in over the course of the next few years. Get that up to, uh, closer to a hundred thousand dollars. But we're asking for this, uh, as we start to do in-service training. We're getting those guys and gals out there trained on the regular, uh, to keep them fresh in their abilities. So that's where the, the request for that, because it hasn't been a priority. Any questions on ammunition? I can tell you, most of our comparable cities are spending between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When I first took over, most SWAT teams, like say, Abilene or Midland, uh, are spending the equivalent of their, just their SWAT team on the total budget for the City of San Angelo's Police Department.
It's one of those expenses that goes up ten, fifteen percent every year anyway.
Yes, sir.
Nobody's had an issue with that.
Um, body armor. Uh, we do try to offset costs, and I think y'all guys know from, from what we've done so far and, and the administration is that we've been trying to find every bit of money we can. I don't just come in and say, hey, I, I need this. Fix it for me. Um, we've brought in, we're, we're right about four million dollars that we brought in over the last year and few months, uh, that we're lined up to get or approved to get. We worked, we do have a, a grant on this, but this is an offset cost for body armor, and we're trying to get the best equipment that we can. This is what I would almost call the equivalent to a fire department's bunker gear. You need it. Uh, you need to be comfortable. You need to be at work appropriately. Uh, and we're seeing that this is a, this is a perishable item as well, last of five years. And we, we want to make sure that we're, we're placing those on the regular and, and, and have some extra, because right now, we've had two officers that are just waiting because we don't have those. They're, they're backlogged on orders. Uh, we're not the only police department. And with all the different conflicts across the world, body armor has become a little bit more, uh, tight.
I believe you skipped the additional grid smart detection cameras.
Stop.
I'm sorry?
That's Public Works.
Okay, that's why there's a B W.
Sorry, I meant to update this slide.
Yeah, it still has police on there, but it's not police, though.
I'm just making sure nobody knows I don't want a camera that takes a picture. Standing around in a stoplight.
I, I will take any type of cameras, though.
Travis, I have a question in there on your, on the body armor.
Sure.
I, I don't know who those vendors are, but most would have, like a, the larger the order, the greater the, the discount. Are there neighboring counties, or can we maybe shop that with the sheriff's department? Uh, just trying to get maybe a, a volume discount?
Yeah, that, and that's a great idea, but I think when it comes to the purchasing side of, and this is where I'd probably rely on maybe Tina on this, is that there's, there's certain rules we have to follow. We do try to use, um, co-ops, which is lower the prices, basically buying together. Um, and, and that's why we try to use those co-ops to be able to bring down those prices where it's, uh, but I'm a little bit outside my lane on that. If you have anything to add?
I don't. I'm not sure exactly on the restrictions with that, but it's something we could look into. It's a good idea.
Especially with, you know, Tom Green County, you know, do that with the city, but...
Sure.
I think, I think it's worth a, worth a look.
Sure.
Travis.
Anything else? Okay. We're gonna roll into the, um, well, as I close out, that's actually getting into fire. You'll see it in the, in the coming, uh, city council, but we're also requesting for, uh, we've approved on multiple grants. We're doing everything we can to, to have force multipliers. So one of which is, is, uh, the Texas Motor Vehicle Theft, uh, Task Force is what we've gone into with them. It's the Crime Prevention Task Force that Texas operates. They're gonna fund two full-time positions, and with that, they're gonna give us, uh, what's called drone as first responder, uh, so we can actually have a eyes aerial drone on the target of whatever crime that's ongoing within about forty-five seconds roughly. Might be longer depending on where they're at in relation to the, the landing, uh, other, landing and, uh, takeoff points. With that, though, you know, I've, I've had the question of can we, can we offset? Because I have six frozen positions right now. Can we offset that? Uh, you can always offset everything, but I can never replace bodies, right? And every comparable that I've seen, every department that we've compared to, everything from medium-sized, and I don't, I don't get anything any past a hundred and ten, because I don't think it's a fair comparison. So we stay in, in our, in our zone between eighty-five and, and a hundred and five. That, that we are, by, by capita and by the total numbers, uh, my CID is, is half of that of other places. We have property crime that is, that is, we lead the way in just about every type of property crime, whether it be theft, whether it be burglary. The only thing that our guys are doing a great job on is, is violent crime, because we're outside of our capacity. So we need those bodies, and I know that that, that is one of those situations that you're strapped for cash, and we have these issues with the, um, with the, with the, being capped at two-point-five. I, I get that. But I'm just encouraging that if you can find a way to find a mixture in there to give me four of those police officers back and a couple of public safety officers, which are cheaper. We need that staff to push back on property crime. At some point in every type, going back to the eighteen hundreds, when the first books on law enforcement were being written, the broken windows theory says that when you have crime in an area, right? That the more that that crime stays in place without being addressed, the more likelihood of other crime creeping in. I don't want to see that happen for us. We're doing everything we can. We started a drug task force, where it's a combination, kind of what you're talking about, Mary, to save money and not silo our work. We're, we're working in every aspect we can with our federal partners to get good, uh, investigations on major crimes. And we're working with the, with the Texas Rangers to look at, maybe them sort of, maybe look at some of the, um, um, cold cases, because we don't have the staffing to put it there. But I just want y'all to know, as a governing body, and so there was the control of the, the funding, we've done everything we can, but I need your help to be able to have those personnel to be able to fight back against a, a, a major issue. So we're looking at five related shootings in, in the last month, well, two months of younger, younger juveniles. And so with that, uh, we're, we, we have had some great investigations, but that's taken everything away from those property crimes to investigate those violent crime. So I just want y'all to be aware of that.
I do want to point out that, uh, Chief, I know that, um, working with you this past year, my, my goodness, your numbers are way down at one point, and we, we've done a lot, you know, to address lateral transfers, to address incentivizing. And you've probably done, you've probably done a lot more than I had expected as far as the number of police officers you ended up with.
Yes, sir.
And so you've done an outstanding job there in there. I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out also.
Thank you. And I, I want to say that, that, that's by the grace of God and a wonderful team. Uh, I, I can't tell you how much, um, I, it's a miracle to be able to get the staffing that we have today. And, and I'm hopeful that as we move forward, that, you know, we're trying to get funding for school resource officers and these additional positions, that I'm not just relying on y'all guys. This is a team effort, and I believe wholeheartedly in the approach that together, this city will be able to make a better future for tomorrow.
Travis, I have no, um, don't mean to be beating you to death here. Are all of your employees in the PD, are they all police officers? What I'm getting at is, uh, if there's any administration work that where they're, they're not gonna be on patrol or, you know, um, so do, are every employee you have, are they all certified policemen?
And, and part of the idea on what's called a public safety officer is to be able to have something that we could put at the front desk and, and make phone calls that are non-certified. So we have lots of people that want to be the police, that maybe through a religious, uh, uh, exception that they have, they can't carry a gun or take somebody's life or some sort of physical impairment. Uh, they can't be the police, that this would offer a, a, a perfect place and a cheaper cost to be able to accomplish some of the same roles. Uh, but we're still, the thing to highlight there is, oh, we have two-hundred-and-twenty-three employees total, and we have one-hundred-and-seventy-four of those that are allotted for police positions. In comparison to, uh, say Wichita Falls, that's thirty positions below in, in police positions and about thirty-nine positions in support staff. So we're still across the board, well below any comparison city. Um, and we find that per capita in even smaller cities. So we're doing the best we can to work with, with what we got, and I'll continue to look for ways to, to do things more efficiently and find force multipliers, and that's why we're looking at every grant, doing everything we can. But the primary goal of the police department is to be able to push back on crime. And I'll go ahead and tell you, the amount of property crime that we're seeing, uh, we have to have those bodies to be able to do that. And we've, we've consolidated, we've removed positions that, and we replaced them with civilian positions that we, we, uh, put every gun back into the street I could. Uh, but I don't have anything else that I can really chip away at right now.
Okay, yeah. What, what you're currently doing answered my question, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And with that, I want to say thank you all. I know this would be a tough decision. I'll be here the rest of the day. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank y'all very much, and God bless.
Thanks, Chief.
Next, we have, excuse me, uh, the Fire Safer Grant match of three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And I think Chief Brody is here to talk about that.
Good morning, counsel. So the Safer Grant, if you recall, a couple of months ago, we came to y'all asking for authorization to apply for this. This is a staffing grant through FEMA. We're requesting twenty additional firefighters for the anticipation of Fire Station Number Nine opening in the next three years. Uh, our training staff is bottlenecked. It takes approximately sixteen months to train fifteen firefighters. And, uh, to get the adequate staffing for twenty new personnel, it's gonna take three years to do that. So we applied with y'all's approval for this Safer Grant just north of one-point-four million. And it's a seventy-five, twenty-five, twenty-five percent match for that number of three, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So this grant is not guaranteed. From what I understand, it's about a twenty, twenty-five percent, twenty percent success rate. So I don't know that this will get approved in this next budget year.
So basically, we're budgeting for the matching component at this point. That's what you see. There's a three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah. In the event we do get approved for it. We should know September to October timeframe.
What do you think your odds are of getting that?
Well, nationally, it's about twenty percent.
Okay.
So I'm hopefully optimistic.
Good luck.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Um, the next two and the last one on this slide are related to Public Works Operations Department. Patrick Farrick wants to go into what's needed here.
All right. So I want to say thank y'all for including this, the additional equipment replacement on this list. Um, we've been for years now advocating the condition of our equipment replacement budget. It's one that has been relatively stagnant, short of, you know, one-time funding here and there. Um, naturally, the cost of our equipment is growing, the cost of, um, making those purchases and, and maintaining that equipment is growing as well. So we've done some things to help try to right-size or reduce buying GPS units and making sure that we're utilizing our equipment appropriately, some of those type of things. Um, but unfortunately, that, the need for equipment replacement has outgrown, um, what funding is available for that. So this two-hundred-and-fifty thousand will, will go toward, um, both vehicles and equipment throughout our general fund department. So everything from our street and bridge, traffic ops, code enforcement, um, cemetery, parks. Um, it touches a multitude of divisions to help get some of those older pieces of equipment replaced, some of those that are very, very costly on our annual budgets, on our annual equipment replacement budgets, and try to flip that just a little bit to help out, help that burden.
And the ones you're replacing will go into our annual auction or something like that, try to get your residual out of?
Yes, sir. Just like any of our, uh, replaced equipment, that does go through the auction process, and those proceeds are budgeted for, um, in the annual budget.
All right. Thank you, Patrick.
Patrick, or is that equipment that we just approved in council earlier, does this two-hundred-and-fifty, does that include that?
No, ma'am. So the equipment that y'all purchased earlier, that was through our stormwater department. Our stormwater department is funded separately from the general fund. We, they earn their own revenue, and they have their own equipment replacement program. So equipment replacement is a component of the stormwater fee. We use that, we put that into fund balance, and then we draw down that fund balance to purchase equipment for stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
For the fuel site upgrade, um, the fuel site is one of those things that's, it's behind the scenes and it's unknown. Um, it's not, um, a very flashy thing, but it is extremely vital to keeping the city going. No matter, no matter if you're in public works, public safety, fire, um, everybody uses, utilizes the fuel site. Um, our fuel site was put in, I believe, in nineteen ninety-two, and has not been upgraded since then. The capacity of the fuel site, the city has grown since then, since it went in. And so we are really limited on the amount of fuel that we can store. It would be extremely scary if all of you were aware of the number of times that we almost don't have fuel for the city. And we are, we as a city are considered a distributor, which means we get first buy-in for, for fuel. So we'll get it before Stripes get it, gets it, before Walmart gets it, before some of those get it. We get fuel on a basis, and we are still extremely at risk for running out of fuel on any given, given basis for the amount that we have. So not only do we have old infrastructure, we have a lack of capacity. What this funding will do, it'll allow us to buy additional tanks and tie into our existing fuel infrastructure. So we're not abandoning what we have. We're gonna add to it. We're gonna add capacity. We're gonna add some resiliency. And we're gonna make sure that in the times of crisis or in the times of need, that we can purchase fuel and have it, have it readily available to us. That we're gonna be talking about resiliency a little bit there, um, some redundancy, if you will. So if one of our fuel sites go down, we will have an alternative fuel site for some resiliency there. We're gonna, so we'll be talking about how we replace that, or where we place this fueling site. But it is additional storage capacity, as well as ensuring if our underground tanks go down, because they are, you know, thirty-something years old, um, that we will still have fuel available for our operations.
Is that, are those, uh, additional storages, are those gonna be in-ground as well?
No, ma'am.
Or above-ground?
No, they will be, they will be a self-contained above-ground. So they will have their own, um, safety containment, so it'll be a tank within a tank. Um, so to prevent any leaks or anything like that. The environmental, um, costs and hazards that go along with in-ground tanks just aren't worth it for us. So we can put an above-ground tank in for cheaper. We can monitor it better and, and get more capacity, more bang for our buck, if you will.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the final one that we have here is the additional grid smart detection cameras. The grid smart detection cameras are the camera systems that are mounted to our signal infrastructures. So it's the cameras that actually, when you pull up to a intersection, it, it notice, it notices that you pulled up there, and it starts to cycle for some of those intersections. So, um, we've gone through it systematically. So we've gone through and systematically been replacing all of our camera systems on our signalized infrastructure intersections to the GridSmart cameras so that we have a comprehensive system in place to look at that. So this is just an additional camera, or I believe that's two additional cameras, to get in there and replace some of our older ones on our intersection so that that detection is part of our cohesive system.
The only human it takes a picture of is the mayor.
That is correct. Yeah, we program it that way.
No law enforcement is tied to these cameras. Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
The next four requests are from HR. I think Kimberly Holly is here to address them.
Good morning. All right, the first one we have is our HRIS system. We talked extensively about this during our strategic planning workshop. This is a software that will allow our department to move from paper files, several different systems, some Excel sheets, all into one system. It will allow an applicant to go from applying with the organization to enrolling in their benefits, to filling out all of their pre-employment forms, to enrolling in their health insurance premiums, and then move them through their employment career. They'll do their performance appraisals and, I know I'm missing a component. But essentially, it will move us out of paper forms using several softwares into one system. And then it will integrate into our payroll software that we are in the process of upgrading right now.
You brought this up earlier in the year. Is this the software you wanted or is this just the one you can afford?
This is one of the two softwares that is recommended through Central Square. That, so it will integrate with our financial system. So I do think this is our best option that will tie together and require less manual entries. We will be maintaining use of Time Clock Plus for our timekeeping for civilian staff. We will be looking into using the new software for timekeeping with fire and PD staff in order to have that integration through Central Square payroll. Our next one is the Comp and Class Study. Y'all have already approved that. And so I just want to thank you for that and give you a slight update. We have sent out emails, we're working on doing some surveys. We will be starting in-person meetings in the next week or two. Following by those staff surveys, the consultants will take that information, review it, and come back to us with recommendations late this fall. But surely by January, we'll have some results to bring back to you guys.
Tommy, you had some questions about the timeline on this? I hate to bring that back, but I thought that was an excellent question yesterday. Can you present that to Kimberly?
I'm not sure who this really falls on, Kimberly. It would probably be y'all's department to also push the issue. But we talked about in our strategic planning session, at doing everything we could to move more at a pace that business moves rather than a pace that government moves. I think all of us realize there's some things we can't speed up. But to the extent we can encourage whomever the vendor is with which we've contracted to still do excellent work, but get this to us simply because it affects every single employee in terms of pay. If at all humanly possible, as one council member, I would like to have that data so that if mid-year adjustments can be made, that we have the ability to do so with the data to back up those adjustments that might be made, either with respect to salaries or with respect to the organizational structure and/or revised job descriptions, et cetera. So I guess my request is, to the extent we can encourage those folks to still do good work, see if they can get it to us before January.
Yes, sir. We have had those conversations with the consultant already. We know we have requested some expedited for certain departments. We know we have some structural issues in the water department. So that is one that we have already brought to their attention that we would like to review. And I believe we've also mentioned police to them. They have requested some structural changes, so we've mentioned that to them, that we would like to compare their structural request to other departments. And how we compare, of course, through all of the levels of their organization.
Thank you.
To your other point, we have had conversations with finance and Daniel based on wanting to do an implementation mid-year. With those results, I would hate to get the results in January and say, thanks for the results. We're not going to do anything with it for another nine months. So we have mentioned, if possible, within the budget, if we were to allocate a 6% raise, possibly reserving 1% to hit some of those major pain points come January through a mid-year increase. So that would be something that would be y'all's discretion and city manager's discretion if we have the ability to address.
I encourage you all to keep moving down that path.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The next request is retiree insurance. I think we've discussed that one before. This is, again, those employees who were hired on prior to the year of 2000 and were promised health insurance through their retirement. Last year, we presented a plan design change for post-65 retirees. Due to an error on the consultant's part, we were unable to implement that plan design change. So that would be something that we would be looking into this year.
Did you fire that consultant?
Yes, sir. That consultant is no longer with us. I am excited to introduce, we have our new consultants here with us today. Hub International is our newest consultant, and so Julian and Corey are with us. If you have any particular questions related to the health insurance, again, are over 65, we should be getting results back in September potentially. And so we should have a recommendation to you fairly shortly, at least earlier than we were looking at last year, to see what that plan design needs to be in order to keep that benefit for those retirees affordable for them and affordable for the organization in order to continue that benefit. As for our current employees and under 65 retirees, we went out to bid for all plans. We received results last Thursday. Hub is currently reviewing those bids. And we are planning to bring you back a proposal, I believe, September 16th. So yes, it will be a little bit late in the budget process. I think the conversation we've had with finance thus far is to set aside a amount of money that the city can afford. And then we'll do some plan design changes in order to keep the cost for employees down to a minimum. Later in the presentation, you will see a little bit more information on that and a slide talking about those employee premiums. Do you have any other questions for me related to those two?
I'm good.
All right, thank you again.
The next item that we have is for Development Services Comprehensive Study. You saw this in your regular session as a budget amendment. We wanted to make sure Aaron had the opportunity to speak on this item.
Good morning, City Council. Just wanted to give you an update that we are still pursuing the resilient communities grant opportunity. We feel like we're about two weeks away from submitting that to the state, which would help supplement the dollars that are being potentially set aside through this budget cycle. We're going to be requesting up to $300,000. Now, it specifically goes back and helps tie together an item that was on the previous agenda today that the emergency mitigation review process, how does that work into the comprehensive plan? As you see all of the items there today, the comprehensive plan, ours is very dated. It really starts bringing all of these together as a comprehensive document for our city council to make decisions on purchasing and studies and where they're moving forward the community. We know that we have a housing study that's going to be coming out here in the next probably six to eight weeks that is going to help be put into that comprehensive plan and help us start focusing what our community needs to do, which in turn, hopefully in about two years, 18 months, two years, we start looking at our other ordinances, all the way from our zoning ordinance and how we adopt our building codes and other ordinances that come into play. Our land development subdivision ordinance are those being pointed back to our comprehensive plan to move our community forward. We know we have some housing shortages in certain areas. We're trying to put some Band-Aids on it, but we really need that comprehensive plan to really tell us this is where and how we're growing, why we're growing, what our median income is and where we, what price point we really need to be at for different things in our community.
Aaron, how long will this take?
Well, if we get the grant, the grant has a very specific timeline for their piece, but it's normally with good community engagement. And this really should be the community's plan telling us what they want. It's going to be 18 months to 24 months total. This really gets us started, gets the folks working on the ground, starting to do public meetings and finding out. It'll help us tell us if we need neighborhood plans for different neighborhoods. But really to do a real depth and study, it'll take 18 months to 24 months. We'll try to get them to move quicker as possible, but we also don't want cookie cutter for our community. We want what our community works, what really works here.
I know that we, by law, we have to announce when town halls are going to be. We've got to go through the steps to send the letters and all. I'd like for us to put some real thought in how to increase that effort. And maybe there's some follow-up or accountability is too strong a word, really, but how we can, I don't know, do better than what our voting record says. You know, we, 6% to 10% of the people show up to vote. Well, I really think we need to actively put that out there, make sure. Even if it requires purchasing, you know, advertising, to get more involvement and more, a bigger, better conversation with the communities. And if that requires town halls in each of our districts, so be it. But I really want to get ahead of that and make sure that we get the right message out, excuse me, consistently. Ideally, it would be as good as the flood that was updated on our, you know, Facebook and website and all. Laurline and Brian did a fantastic job of doing that. So even if it's something similar, but this is a huge, very expensive item. And I want to make sure that, and we all do, make sure that it's done right and marketed appropriately. And I know you will, but I just wanted to go on record in saying that. So anyway, thank you, Aaron.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you've covered the comp study.
Yes, sir.
Just as a reminder, these are one-time funding items. So we'll take these, we'll bring these back to you guys in a form of a budget amendment.
I think Karen had a question I missed.
Just a quick housekeeping matter before we leave the one-time funding slide. GIS, the GIS upgrade, is that a one-time funding item? Is it moving to public works?
I believe Aaron handled that with maybe a reorg one of his positions.
We did with a development services position. So we have a GIS analyst within our department, but it's really only for private development. Not sure how that impacts the full GIS that works for the entire city government to do their aspects. I know that they may have had some requests at some point, but we're trying to address it on our department level just because development moves every day and we're making decisions every day that we want to be as accurate as we can for our developers and homeowners, that we're not making a decision and then a few weeks later coming back, oh, we made the wrong decision, you have to change something. So we thought that very critical and we did that with a current staffing position to reclassify it into a GIS analyst position.
So Aaron, stay, stay there.
Yes, sir.
Where does G...
Don't go far.
Where does GIS live? Does it live in the planning department? Where does GIS live?
It does not. It lives in our IT department currently. They're under that and I believe it's under Michael Dane's purview through Bucky. But that's where they are housed currently.
I don't intend this to be inflammatory question, but it may be unintentionally. Why isn't it in planning?
I can probably give a little more history on that. So it was originally, that over the last, I don't know, three, four years has been discussed with, at that time, Mike Smith was our GIS director. And because IT works globally throughout the organization with that type of infrastructure and data and so forth, Mike and everyone agreed, and most cities have moved it to IT. We were one of the only ones who didn't. So they made a good case of why that works. The importance that at the end of the day is that they're able to work with all departments and provide the data and the data is getting into that area, whether it's coming from public works or whether it's coming from planning. And so IT is just a good hub to house that information. And like Aaron said, in their case, what we're doing to ensure that data gets there is now he has restructured very creatively with his existing positions, basically, to have a person who specializes in making sure that data is put in. So that department is not trying to have everybody everywhere, but someone within the department on the ground who gets that data into them. And then they manage it accordingly.
Okay.
Are we fixing to wrap up the one-time funding?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me, it's, I just want to point out to everybody, we don't get these opportunities often. And because of what the council did in the previous year, a very conservative budget led to this one-time punch. All right, it's great. Usually at the end of the year, we have a little bit of funding left over in sales tax. But I just want to commend the previous people, the previous mayor, a lot of people stepped in. And because of how conservative our budget, our fund balance, it's not many people that can pick up a $3.5 million health, you know, shortfall in some things. And I just say, y'all deserve, you know, an ad boy for a job well done. And in eight years, I've never seen us have been able to reach in and go this deep to fix a lot of problems and cover some Band-Aids. I want to say, nice job, all of y'all.
Mayor, and I do want to point something out as well. Thank you for that. We appreciate that as far as staff. The dollar amount, the excess general fund balance of $4.3 million, almost $4.4 million, we're pulling that out of the fund balance, but it still leaves us 90 days in fund balance, which is really best practice to keep that dollar amount in there. So thank you for that. We appreciate that.
And I did just want to make sure that we are going to be bringing back some of these items in a future budget amendment for you guys for subsequent approval. The next slide that we have is the slide of the summary of revenues and expenditures. As you can see here, we are currently budgeted revenues over expenditures of $3.5 million. This is kind of what we have to work with with some of the items that have kind of been brought to you or that we're going to present to you here on the next slide. We have a, some funding requests here. These are high-level funding requests, kind of items that are above $20,000. The first three are for public safety. The police department is asking for additional funding for training in the amount of $60,000. And I think if you guys have any questions on that item, Chief Griffith should be able to answer them.
I think nobody had any objections to it at all, Chief. I think it's in and it's plugged in good. I did have, as we get into fire department overtime, I'm going to want a little explanation of why we're incurring that.
The next two items are for fire department overtime of $100,000 and then an additional contribution for fire apparatus of $150K.
Good morning.
Are these one-time requests? Are these ongoing? This will be an ongoing revenue stream to fund these requests?
Yes, sir, that's correct. There'll be ongoing costs that will be built into the budget.
Thank you.
Good question.
No, ma'am, these aren't one-time. These are amounts that will come out of the marginal revenue of 3.5 that we currently have.
Chief Brody, just as we deal with fire department overtime, tell me how your plans to add people will help mitigate or reduce some of the costs we're sitting here.
So this overtime figure, it's a little staggering at first, but I want you to know that this has been festering over multiple years, okay? We have been run over our overtime budget multiple years in a row. We've put several systems in place to kind of control the overtime. But bottom line is, we have 43 personnel that we have to have on duty every single day in order to... And in order to accomplish that, we have to hire overtime to do it. We've been able to offset some of those costs with salary savings that we have seen in the past. Some of the things that contribute to overtime is, I mentioned to you about the extended training period. It takes sixteen months. Even though we may be fully staffed, I may have ten to fifteen people in the trade-in academy and they're unable to work shift work and we have to backfill those. So again, I'm forecasting that this should be a very close number to bring me in line next year. The overtime budget hasn't been adjusted very much to account for inflation and increased salaries. Last year, we got an increase and I'm hopeful that this will cover me for next year as well.
Great explanation. And number two, while you're here, why don't you talk about the apparatus?
So this is a subject that, those of you that have been on council have heard me stand up here and preach. With the rising cost of vehicle replacements, you're looking at a million dollars for a fire truck. And currently, we cash flow that, $250,000 a year. It's going to take four years to save up enough cash to purchase a million-dollar fire truck. And then it takes three years to build that fire truck. Our manufacturers are that far behind. We have ten vehicles in our frontline fleet and simple math, it takes four years to save up the money and ten in the fleet, that's a forty-year replacement. And I don't think anybody wants a forty-year-old fire truck pulling up to their house to put out their fire. So I think this is going to help us. It's not going to get us to where we need to be, but again, this is the incremental step in the right direction.
Any other questions?
I have just kind of a random question. We've talked about this with some departments and stuff. On the overtime, from your guys, do you think they, and girls, do you think they, do you need more staff or do you think your people would want more overtime? Like if there was only a certain amount allowed in the budget, which one would your people want more?
So, long-term, more staffing costs less. And more overtime, you know, in the long-term, is going to cost more money to have that overtime. This additional $100,000, that is with the current staffing that we have. And the reason why it has caused this overtime figure is because I do have personnel in the academy and I don't have them on the floor. You know, the overtime is great to an extent because at some point, you're going to get burned out and you're not going to want to work more. Two years ago, we were having to go to mandatory overtime, meaning you did not sign up, you could not work that day, but you could not go home. Mandatory overtime is a morale killer and two years ago, we were eat up with it. And we've made huge steps. We got several people out of the academy, made huge steps in the right direction to reduce the mandatory. And of course, our deployments have slowed down a little bit as well. So that reduced our mandatory.
Do you, with our, not trying to get in politics here, but with political climate, do you see TIFMS being needed more again towards, was down the border stuff, was that TIFMS or was that completely a separate deal?
Yeah, the border stuff was part of the TIFMS. So we are being, things are being forecast for this fall, this winter, to be a very, very active wildland season, wildfire season. It is very similar to what we saw in 2010. And if you remember the Wildcat Fire in 2011, we had excessive rainfall during the summertime and then drier conditions hit late summer. And then in 2011, it was just a giant tinderbox. We are seeing those same conditions right now and forecasting the winter fire season and the early spring fire season to be incredibly active. So, let's hope it keeps raining.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we hear your voice?
Nope.
I'm sorry I interrupted your speech with my phone ringing.
Somebody must have snuck up here and turned on the ringer. It's not my fault. Chief Brody, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
The next two items are related to animal services. The first item is an additional animal services officer. I believe during this fiscal year, we were able to convert an FTE for an officer. This is an additional officer in the next year's budget, which should bring us to a total of six. And then an additional 24,000 for rescue services.
Hello, yes, thank you. Morgan Chegwin again, interim director. That is exactly right, that we had talked about adding two animal services officers to the roster to have an appropriate response. This funding before you would get us to that staffing of six folks working in the field. And the animal services rescue services agreement is a wag, admittedly. We currently are publishing that proposal to get feedback on what, if any, participants want to do with that. So this would be an increase to the existing budget for our best estimate of what those proposals would come back at. But certainly, any change or variance from that would come before this group again.
Think we're headed in the right direction?
I think we have to try, for sure. I think we're, we have to explore all of those options and we're not in a position to take on those programs themselves. I think the biggest thing weighing on animal services over the last year certainly has been an emphasis on field services. And so to continue to allow this team to provide outreach, provide enforcement, to do all of that case follow-up, I think we've got to consider continuing some kind of contract.
Right. And we put a committed advisory committee to come forward and what they suggested was millions of dollars of change. I think we picked out the primary ones that were obtainable and we could execute and we're moving forward with that. But it's a hot button in City of San Angelo and we've plugged in a lot more assets to it than what we have done in the past. I mean, it's, you know, five to six times what we spend on health services. So I think we're, I just want everybody to realize, we are making a focus on it. We hope that it no longer becomes a hot button and eventually it's just a standard part of what we do. But I want to thank y'all for coming through there and helping pick out the two that we're going to move forward with, the options.
Thank you. And that's our vision as well.
Right.
Morgan, does the RFP that you have published cover spay and neuter services?
Yes, we did ask for a proposal to include that.
Awesome. Because that's the only thing that really is trackable or one of the only things that's trackable. The result of that work is measurable. So thank you for that.
We'll see what the groups are willing to provide and what that cost would be, but that was a component that was included.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
The final item on here is the HRS software. You saw this in the one-time cost, that was for the implementation portion of this software. This is the ongoing re-incurring cost for that software. If there's any questions on that software?
I do not. I think she covered it well the first time. Anybody have any questions on this?
Yes, that $116,000, we pay that annually?
That is the currently quoted annual amount to the general fund. Yes, ma'am. That would be the annual amount.
Get in the software writing business.
Well, Kimberly, how many people is that? How many people are you covering with this software? How many employees?
That would be everybody who applies for the city. We currently have thirty-four positions open. We're projecting to post another eleven to twelve jobs this week. So that would be taking in all applications along with the maintenance and managing the employee profiles of about a thousand employees, part-time and full-time.
I understand. I mean, I'm just, it's just a lot of money.
Yes, and I will let you know, this is the initial cost. Of course, each year, softwares go up. And we also are only putting our fire and police departments on it for timekeeping right now. We currently have a separate software that's doing timekeeping for civilian staff. Eventually, we would likely move those over all to one software. And so at that time, we would be seeing an additional cost, but we would have some savings from the other software.
Did we, I assume you all tried, did we try to see if Time Clock could match what the other company can do?
Time Clock is only capable of doing a timekeeping component. This other software would do from an employee's application to their retirement. So it's a full suite.
Right, they didn't have what we needed.
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Kimberly, would it be preferable to have the timekeeping function for all employees in addition to police and fire on this system? And is it due simply to cost that we're not doing that now or other considerations?
I'm going to say other considerations largely. In order to make that transition of all staff from Time Clock, that we still have some struggles with getting staff to approve their time, submit their time, all of those issues. And then also onboarding and implementing it with fire and PD who have not used any form of timekeeping software in the past. Our staff is just not capable of doing that at one time. Taking on this project will already be a huge hurdle for our staff to get through. So we're actually going to do a phased implementation. So this $116,000 will get us started. And we'll be implementing those modules of this software a little bit at a time as we're capable of doing it while maintaining our current workload.
Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
The next slide, I believe, is also Kimberly's.
Don't go too far.
Okay, so just wanted to go over some of the challenges that we're currently facing. I just mentioned, we have thirty-four positions currently posted. I counted them last night. And I think I have maybe eleven to twelve in our queue waiting to approve to get posted. And the difficulty we're having of attracting qualified candidates and retaining qualified candidates has been a major struggle across our organization. From mechanics and fleet services to our assistant director in water utilities to engineering staff, down to our maintenance staff and administrative assistants. So it's really not one particular area. We're kind of seeing it throughout the entire organization. The applicant pools remain limited and as positions are getting posted and people apply, by the time we are making job offers, they've already taken positions elsewhere. We've had turnover rates repeating, leading to repetitive training. Again, the moment you hire somebody, you train them, they get their CDL license. Within less than five years, they're gone to the oil field and we have paid to give them a CDL license. And that's not just with CDL, again, that's across the organization. And then the strain that that leaves on our staff who is loyal and dedicated and continues to stay with us. And we greatly appreciate their loyalty. And so we want to make sure that we are compensating them, but not only compensating them, but trying to relieve that burden so they don't have burnout. Goals from the compensation classification study, again, that will correct those pay discrepancies, ensure there's equity. They are going to be helping us rewrite job descriptions, verify grading and organizational structure is correct. We will benchmark against industry standards, not just other cities, but other organizations within San Angelo that we are losing employees to. And then that will provide leadership, our HR staff and city management and council with the data to make appropriate decisions so that finance can work on a funding plan for those. Can you? Thank you. As for our health insurance fund, I think we've already covered this a little bit. And again, I do have our consultants with us here today if we want to discuss the health insurance plan in more detail. But we did go out to bid. We received, I believe, thirteen bids and they came in last Thursday. We've started reviewing those and we plan to come back September 17th with a recommendation. Of course, we talked earlier that we needed three and a half million dollars to fund the lapse in our current year. I would project that lapse plus probably more, depending on how our bids come back and how we have a plan design in next year's budget.
With where we're at, is this a good time to bring a representative up of the new health insurance fund to maybe give us a, and you may want to do it after this slide, Kimberly, entirely up to you?
Nope, this is the perfect time. Julian or Corey?
I want to hear the headwinds, the obstacles that we have to deal with and maybe benchmark these or compare this to what other cities have to. And where I'm looking at is where do we as San Angelo sit on the progressive ladder? Are we where we need to be, which I don't think we are? Are we taking the right steps to get where we need to be? And health insurance is one of those things that over the past ten years that has just become one of the expenses that's the hardest to manage. I know the Inflation Reduction Act, when that came off last year, that was a very expensive surprise that slapped us all. So number one, thank you for being one of our new vendors and maybe give us a little heads up on where we're headed.
Sure, and thank you. My name is Julian Fontana with Hub International.
La Mica.
We came on effective April 1st with the city and so we have been doing a lot of discovery and validation of the plan in terms of what's going on. I think the infrastructure in terms of the administration of the plan is solid with what's in place. We have done benchmarking. Hub does a annual benchmarking of all public entities across the state and so we have done comparatives of what the benefit plan offering is compared to other entities. And it's relatively on par with where you need to be, but we do have some recommendations that'll be forthcoming with the RFP that we're looking at. You know, the medical, it is a self-funded plan, partially self-funded with stop-loss reinsurance. And so the issue that we're running into, or the city has been running into with regard to the funding of the plan, is that the total plan liability is not being realized with what the budget amount put in place is. And so that's where the deficits occur. And so we've been truing that up with the HR team and staff to give a better projection about what that is so that, you know, there's transparency in that process and everyone knows what's going on. So the Milliman or Siegel forecast for medical and pharmacy inflation is eight percent on medical and 12 to 13% on pharmacy. So those are, those are costs that just are going to naturally have to be managed through either plan design or utilization review and management protocols with inside each of the programs. And so we're looking at both on the medical side as well as on the pharmacy side, what those management programs that are embedded inside the plans are in an effort to make sure that we have all the proper protocols in place.
We all hate surprises and like this year, we had a three and a half million dollar surprise. Could you tell us what factors went into that as how that came to be?
I believe it's purely a budgeting standpoint, you know, a budgeting perspective, you know? There's a combination of fixed costs, the administration of the plan, as well as the reinsurance costs. Those are the fixed costs. And then there's a claims amount. The claims liability is driven by the stop-loss reinsurance, which sits on top of the plan and protects the city. And so when you add the expected claims liability and the fixed costs together, you know what the total plan liability is. And that's how the funding rates or the premium equivalent should be derived. And those are probably about 25 to 30%. They don't really reflect the plan liability. And so we are in, you know, in the next iteration of this, when we go into the plan design and review, we're going to be making sure that it's communicated that the rates that are established do fund the plan liability in total. And then you guys can decide how much, you know, you want to fund through the budget and/or through reserves that are allowed for the plan.
So where I'm going, how did we miss it, three and a half million? Did we have some unexpected claims this year and was it significantly more than prior years?
We have had several really high claimants. I think we usually hit about four to five hitting stop-loss this year, where we are at nine. So that was a major hit. But historically, the plan has not been funded appropriately. I think we've all known that for many years and we kept kicking the can down the road and to the point where we're at three and a half million dollars to make it through this year. If we were to have a few more high claimants this year, we could easily be looking at significantly more than the three and a half million.
Well, and thank you for your honesty there. I mean, that's transparency. We missed it and I wouldn't say it was a huge error in anybody's specific fault, but addressing it to where we don't have those problems is, what's passed is behind us. We need to look at trying to prevent these things as, we all hate coming at the end of the year going, we've got a, I mean, because of our conservativeness, we've been able to handle these steps, but we to handle these steps, but we need to try to mitigate them or allow them as best we can, and it's always health insurance. It's just, for seven, eight years, there's always been a huge surprise, and at the end of the year, it's like, this is more we're going to put into that bucket.
Right, and you'll see, Jonathan, if you'll move to the next slide. The city has absorbed the majority of the increases over the last ten years. In 2016, if you were an employee, the employee-only low plan, you were paying six dollars and fifteen cents a month. Today, you would be paying twenty dollars and forty-four cents a month for your health insurance plan. So where the city went from four hundred and fifty-three dollars to five hundred and eighty-two dollars. So the organization has been trying to pick up that cost year after year. I think we are to a point where we're going to have to share that burden with the employees.
Kimberly, is there a way to, could we combine with a group? You know, we were talking about yesterday, it's almost like an aggregator, but if the third-party administrator and the company itself would allow to, I think the chamber may have been included in that at one time, but if nothing-
The chamber's still on our plan, yes ma'am.
Okay, you know, everybody knows, the larger the group, the lower the premiums. So could we consider putting the sheriff's office on that and/or some of these smaller communities? You know, Ballinger or Broad, just to make that group larger. Now, obviously, we wouldn't be contributing to those other, just our city employees, but is that feasible and worth looking at to increase the size of our group?
Kimberly?
Yes.
Let me jump in. Thirty years ago, when I was on the council, that very same issue arose, and we had conversations with the school, I was involved. We had conversations with the school district and the county. And what it came down to, Mary, was it became very territorial. People wanted to manage the plan, but they wanted them to manage the plan and not us to manage the plan. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that are specific to our group that don't affect the other group, and you start commingling some of those things. The idea at the philosophical level is good. The theoretical part is true. Insurance is based on the law of large numbers, but people want to control what they want to control and don't want anybody else messing with it. We never could get past that thirty years ago. Now, that may change now, but then you have also, then it comes down to Julian's firm having to, somebody's got to say, okay, this is your stuff, your people, your claims, your stop-loss. This is ours. Oh, and here's your, this group's. It becomes pretty unwieldy to do that. Now, can it be done? Yeah, probably so. I don't know that y'all, I would seriously doubt y'all have surveyed other cities to see if any other cities do anything like that. It would be, I think, the closest thing might be, TML used to offer a plan. Do they still?
Yes.
It's not affiliated directly. Yep. It's not affiliated directly with the Texas Municipal League anymore. It's primarily for small groups, smaller cities, you know, of a hundred lives or less, and so that's the mechanism for that. You know, typically, we don't see cities or counties, you know, school districts collaborating, you know, for a plan because of the control issues that you said, and then balancing, you know, the subs, you know, who's subsidizing who. You know, the school district's running well, but the city's running not as well, the county, you know? So you have to be able to develop a cost-sharing arrangement and how the claims are ultimately, you know, validated and how each, each party's costs are assessed. I think at your size, the plan can be managed appropriately and effectively under our model and the way that we plan to facilitate the plan administration and the cost management. I think that we'll be able to create some stability for the city and some transparency in terms of what's going on in the plan while still providing a high-quality benefit program to the employees.
A third-party administrator worth their salt. We'll find out about Julian's firm.
Yes, I used to work for one.
You know, we'll find out, but a quality TPA will, will serve us better. Julian touched on something there. One of the, one of the issues really is, if you've got everything in one group, there's going to be one of those groups that's running hot, and the claims are just, they're not out of control, but you've got a lot of sick people in that particular organization. And the other organization or other organizations may not be, they may be running really well. And to Julian's point, trying to allocate how you share that and how, because that affects the rates you pay for your stop-loss insurance.
Yes, I understand how this, all this works. Have you, is this your first year with the city?
We started in April.
So this is your first year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, that was going to be my next question, if y'all overlooked the three and a half million. So I'm glad to know that you're on top of this. Right, yeah, so.
And Mary, to further elaborate on your question, we do work with the chamber. The chamber does buy into our health insurance plan, and we do have a contract with Tom Green County for clinic services. So where it is possible, we have looked at those partnerships.
Well, I'm glad y'all are, y'all are on top of it then, and you're, we're thinking alike, so good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have no further questions. Thank you, Julian. Thank you for coming up.
The next slide is illustrating our property tax rates. This is the rate up at the voter approval rate, basically capping us at the three and a half percent. Plus, you'll also see the debt rate is also increasing, and that is related to the Coliseum bonds. Overall, an increase of our tax rate of point zero four zero three. We did pull up some medium homeset taxable value numbers at a home valued at a taxable value of a hundred and forty-three thousand. This increase would be about fifty-eight dollars a year. Nine dollars of that would be attributed to that maintenance operations line, and forty-nine dollars would be related to the debt rate, which of course is increasing because of the Coliseum bond that the voters approved.
But the median household was sixty bucks a year and their change?
Yes, sir.
With this proposed point seven nine four seven?
Yes, sir.
And that goes back, we're leaving the point seven five four four as it's been the past ten, eleven years?
Yes, sir.
Cool, and this is just a add-on? Okay.
The next slide is our marginal revenue slide. Like we showed before, we have marginal revenue currently of three point five million dollars. Proposed TIRs totaling up to six hundred and fifty-two. This is made up of some of those items that we saw previously. And then, right now, we currently have a line item in here for five percent raises totaling two point eight million. This gets us to a balanced budget. And willing to take any questions or any?
Is that five percent, is that all departments, city, fire, police, or is that just city?
This would be just general fund department, so your parks, fire, police. Although, we would apply this, our current plan is to apply this citywide, so this would also apply to water. The utility funds, the airport, all of the other funds that we have for Concho, the cemetery. Every city employee would be impacted by that five percent raise, but that cost, that two point eight, is just for the general fund employees. The next slide is just a, just some information for y'all. We are planning to bring this budget back to you guys on the nineteenth council meeting, and we'll also have a record vote at that point on the tax rate. And then we will tentatively have the adoption of both the budget and the tax rate at the September second meeting.
And that gives us a two-week cushion in case anything goes awry.
Yes, sir.
But, so, questions? Let's go down the road, starting with you, Tommy. Do you have any questions about what's been proposed?
I think we've done a good job. I think, I want to say thanks to Daniel and the staff that brought us some decent numbers that we can work with, and we're taking care of some of the things that we need in the city, so I'm good.
Councilman Self?
I'm good.
Young Self?
Young Self.
Patrick?
I mean, I think we're all on right track. Is, does any of this need to be, and this is a deeper conversation, does this need to be looked at for the NRCS, like we talked about, trying to figure out a way to fund that as well? Does any of this need to be, can it be adjusted any?
Yeah, not, not in, not in this budget. I think with that project, we try to find some one-time funding for those properties or for whatever level we decide to participate in that program.
Perfect, thanks. Karen?
All good.
Mary?
Talking of questions, I was going to do, but this is just, it's not talking about the A and E that you don't have.
No, wait.
No, not yet.
With that, nice job, y'all. Let's move forward with that.
Yeah, so then, just the next slide we have real quick is the street infrastructure fund. This is the point zero zero seven two that we've dedicated from the property tax rate to street infrastructure and the maintenance and rehabilitation of our streets. We are seeing an increase of seventy thousand, almost seventy-one thousand this year, and that is mainly just due to property values increasing. And with that, I believe that's the end of our general fund session, if we'd like to take a little bit of a break before we jump into enterprises or if there's any questions on the street infrastructure.
We need a break right now.
I believe we're going to take a break, thirty minutes, I think, sounds good. I will sit back in this seat at twelve forty and we'll move forward at the end.
Heather has a problem with it.
All right, it's twelve forty-one. We'll call this meeting back to order. As we move into the enterprise funds, Jonathan, we're glad you're back here as the voice of the table.
I think we're going to want to jump to the hot fund, only because we have some people who may want to speak to some of this, if you guys have any questions.
Absolutely.
So for hotel occupancy tax revenues, and just this little slide just kind of showing, we're projecting somewhat flat with where we're at, at fiscal year twenty-five. We kind of expect hotel revenues to kind of stay at that same level for the next fiscal year. Here's a slide of the revenues and the expenditures. Of course, hotel occupancy tax only going up a thousand dollars. On the budgeted side of things, interest income being budgeted at twenty-five thousand. And then we have external partners' contributions going up a hundred and three thousand, and transfers to other funds going up to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. We have some more detail on that next slide, if there's no questions on revenues or expenses.
So when we, there are people here, we're looking at pretty much going flat with it, but I think there are some people here that wanted to speak about their budget. I don't, we don't, it's, if you're good with it, it's all good. But if you want to make a discussion here at this point, I would say we'll dedicate three minutes to it, but we can't have a long show, and I don't expect maybe but one or two of these people to come up and speak.
And I think it's if you, if you guys have really any questions for the organizations themselves, like you said, for the most part, most of these programs are staying flat right now, with the exception to the Arch program, which is mainly just to cover administration costs for that program.
Okay.
Right now, we have a hundred thousand dollar increase to the Concho celebration, as well as an increase to civic events of a hundred and forty-nine thousand. And that one's meant to cover some of the shortage in revenue that we're going to have with the Coliseum being closed. And then we have an additional contribution to the sports complex of a hundred and fifty thousand. That's, that's going to help reduce some of the funding support that the general fund gives that sports complex. So if there's any questions on, on any of these specifically, or if you want any, any answers from any of these organizations, I think we can go through those. But right now, this is currently where we have them budgeted.
Well, I will say, the first thing I brought up yesterday in a, in a conversation with Daniel was over the Concho Christmas celebration. And I did talk with Mr. Fluger this morning about, there's a difference in the funds there, Daniel.
Okay.
And so we at least need to bring that up and say, while this is not the final number, this is pretty close to the final number. We just have a couple of weeks to make sure we get everything, and I would love for Daniel to be itemized and lined out, and we know exactly where we are moving forward.
Absolutely. Thank you for anything. He and I had discussions in the past, and there's a dollar amount that we had talked about, that I want to make sure that is addressed. The, the initial request, I thought it was, I know for a fact it was too high, so I want to make sure we maintain. So yeah, we'll get that resolved.
Well, and I think there's, there's a difference between there's where the starting money is, where the sponsor money is, the revenue, how that all comes back in, plays into the big picture. But when we took this over last year, we were under, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were under the thought that it would be about two hundred to two hundred and twenty thousand would take to run that for one year.
For one year, that's correct, for one year. And then after that, we would build a working capital fund or a fund that would, that would carry over and allow them to start the next event and have those monies already in there.
Right.
Because they do bring in revenues, so anywhere between a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars per year, so.
And some of my questions, I know some of those monies you have to have upfront, and there's some things you're always prepping for. I think there's going to be some issues with storage to move things out of Fluger's over to downtown San Angelo. We'll be taking over a lot of this, Monica. So I know there are some questions there, and I brought that up yesterday. I talked to Lee this morning. He had to go to a funeral, I get that, but I think there's at least a meeting that needs to happen to line out that one.
We do.
Jeremy Bartz, while you're here, you submitted a budget that was about a hundred thousand dollars more than what we have here. Can you maybe elaborate the request for that?
Yes, sir. There we are. Good afternoon, Jeremy Bartz, Vice President, Destination Marketing, Convention and Visitor Bureau, whatever you want to call it, I'm good with either one, Discover San Angelo. In terms of the budget request that's been submitted, one large piece of that is for additional marketing opportunities for us through our website, as well as through some of the publications that we're utilizing. As part of our contract, we obviously need to make sure that we hit as many different places as we possibly can, get as much, as many heads and beds as possible here in town in every way that we can. Website redevelopment, as we've seen through other departments, is fairly expensive. So in order for us to redevelop this, we're looking at about a fifty thousand dollar increase to that, as well as roughly about forty thousand in our overall publication and advertising and sales. So that's, that's essentially where that was going to be eaten up.
Okay, do you see the improvements in that website? I mean, is there a way to track what that would gain?
There are, and in fact, we're utilizing a new tool this year through Datify that allows us to target ads to people that has blown our website up. It's, it's been phenomenal to watch the number of people who have actually come in and seen our website and actually correlated to come to the city and stay in our hotels. So when you put all of that together and you make the website more appealing, it gives those people something more to look at when they're coming down the road.
All right. Well, and that's one that we're going to have to look at, and we have our budget here, but long story short, I needed to know what your request was.
Yes, sir.
What you had down on the money and how you were expecting to gain that back to make sure we had a net positive and to go forward.
Yes, sir, absolutely, and that's, that's ultimately our goal, is to be net positive.
All right.
We never want to get to a point where we're losing money.
All right, okay, and that's, that may be something we address more in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeremy.
You bet. Any other questions? We're good?
I think Patrick might have.
Yes, sir.
And mine, we kind of went from hotel taxes to this real quick, and so this kind of ties a little bit together. Do we know, hotel tax revenue has actually dropped the last three years. Do we know why that's trended down instead of the other direction?
What we're seeing for twenty twenty-five so far is that actually occupancy is up, RevPAR, which is revenue per available rental, is up, and average daily rate is up. So when you talk average daily rate, that is not inflationary, that is a hundred percent demand-driven. So that means that more people are coming due to what they want to be here for. It's not driven up by the inflationary costs of the regular economy. And so with that, what we're able to deduce at this point is that, again, and I don't want to knock on wood, and I don't want to jinx anything, but it's, it's turning out to be a better year than it was even in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-three, if everything stays the same.
Okay. Tina, are we seeing that? Do you see what I was talking about on the trend down?
Yes, sir. A lot, a lot of the prior years, we've received lump sum payments for some of the audit activity that we've had in previous years. We're starting to see that dwindle just a little bit more and more, so we're not seeing those big lump sum payments, people getting caught up on their hotel occupancy taxes, which is why you're also seeing us kind of budget kind of flat for the next fiscal year as well.
Okay. Do we, for twenty-five, are we on track? Are we above?
We're, we're on track, we're on track to hit.
We're on track, we're on track to hit that budget, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank y'all.
So some of y'all might have come in late. We're going over the Hot Tax Fund right now. This is the budget we have down. It matches last year. If somebody needed to come up and talk for a moment, I've got two or three minutes here that we'd like to share, if you need to talk. Yuki?
Hi, everybody. I'm Yuki Kuniyuki, the Director for the San Angelo Performing Arts Center. I'd like to welcome the new council members. If you haven't come by the performing arts, we would love to have you come by. The only comment I have is for a recommendation. As you look, I know that the Public Art Commission is the entity that's going to review the Hot Fund request for the other arts organizations in the town. My recommendation would be taking a relooking at the Public Art Commission, so that it's not only a visual arts board, but one that serves the performing arts as well. Because right now, the members of the board are only visual arts people. And I think that would be, I think it needs to be evolved, especially for the comprehensive plan that you have in place, because we need some commission that oversees all the arts in San Angelo and provides the council with an understanding of where we are as a community. You know, how many art organizations do we have? How many have we lost? And where are we going to go in the future? Thank you for your time.
So Yuki, don't leave. So from what you just said, you don't think performing arts is maybe getting the best representation out of what we look at here, right? You would like to see the little broader view of that, that includes some of your group?
Well, I think it would serve the city in the best way if we expand the Public Art Commission to include performing arts. For example, if a musician wants to busk in San Angelo, play on the street in San Angelo, they don't know where to go. And I think the Public Art Commission could be answer to the council and help identify the best ways for people to perform in public spaces or have art in public spaces. For right, two years ago, I went through the process of figuring out how to busk, for example. You have to get permission from the business, then go to the Plans Department to get a letter, to take to Police Department to pay your itinerant worker's fee, and then go back to permits. And so it's a really convoluted process. And if we're a music-friendly city, I think having the Public Art Commission expand its kind of role to not just be visual arts, but also performing arts, it would be in the best interest of everybody.
I think that's very well spoken. That doesn't really pertain to what you're going to need on funds, right?
No, no, it's not for my funds. I'm just, I know I've spoken to some of the other arts organizations that are not here, and that was one of their concerns, was representation on the Public Art Commission. But I think when we think about the long-term goal for the city and the upcoming comprehensive plan, if we had a Public Art Commission that represents all the entities in, you know, cultural performing and visual arts, that's a great way to infuse the plan with where we want to be in the future as a travel tourism destination.
Okay. While the performing arts is not my superpower, I think just what you said made a lot of common sense, that we kind of need to have a fair representation and maybe spread that out.
All right, thank you.
Well spoken. Is there any, come on up.
Hello, I'm Laura Huckabee. I'm the curator of the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts, and I'm joined here by Alora Henderson, our Development Manager, and also by Lynn Shipley, our Operations Manager. We just want to thank the city for supporting the arts. It's, I'm honored to live and work in San Angelo, a community that values the arts so much, and especially to work for the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts. We just had some brief statistics we wanted to share with you guys. We have lots of events every year that bring in multiple people from all over the state. Our ceramics events, which are annual, but our upcoming ceramic competition is biennial. We will be doing that in the spring of 2026. We're anticipating 1,500 visitors, not just from out of state, but also, well, within the state, out of San Angelo, but also out of state and even internationally. As the reputation of our ceramic competition has grown, and also our ceramic collection, we have seen more attention internationally. And we're excited that that's coming up. We have internationally known artists coming in as our juror, as our invited artists. This is happening in the spring. And just our regular gallery attendance, just our ordinary exhibits on an ordinary day when we're open during ordinary hours. We tracked over 1,100, was it out of state and international visitors last year? And that doesn't include the out-of-town visitors within Texas. We have quite a bit of those from Midland, Odessa, Abilene, and I-35 corridor.
And I would just like to add to that.
A little bit.
There we go. Let's make sure your mic is on.
Yeah, I'm Alora, and I'm the Development Manager. And one of the things I did this year was compilation for our cultural district, because the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts, we founded and we managed the cultural district for the city of San Angelo. And within that, just to sort of give you a quick synopsis, we have the Fort Concho, we have the Railway Depot, and we also consider the Chamber of Commerce part of our group. So I do a report every year, so that, and we also have our own website, which is managed by SAMFA. So this is part of what we appreciate from the Hot Fund tax. This helps maintain a lot of what we do here. But altogether, if you total the cultural district out-of-state visitors between those four entities, which are in the cultural district, that was almost 2200.
22,000.
22,000 visitors from out of state. All right, so 22,000, 21,408, exactly. So we just feel like, you know, it's nice for you to know that we are combining a lot of the resources and driving a lot of visitation to the cultural district.
We'd love to see people come to town. And all of us have different passions and interests. I'm probably not the best ceramic guy, so you may not want me for a judge. Maybe Shane Kelton could be your next ceramic judge, but anyway. The point is, you bring up things that sometimes we don't see. And that's the whole part of having the best people in the room, is you make sure what parts aren't covered are now covered by that group. So number one, anybody that can help assist and bring in 22,000 people is always welcome. And we thank you for your efforts and what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the list? Monica, next.
I really just want to ask a question, just to verify, on Concho Christmas, since Mr. Fluger's not here, this $100,000, we will be revisiting that in a conversation after today? Is that what I understood?
You understood that correct.
Okay, good. I think we do need to revisit that subject altogether with Mr. Fluger in attendance, and I'd like to be there as well at that meeting.
And you know, he would be here, he's got that funeral go-to, but I spoke with Daniel, spoke with you, we've got the key partners in that to help line that one out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. With that said, I think we've covered everybody on the Hot Tax Board right here. Is there anybody else that needs to speak? If not, we'll flip to the next page.
We're going to move back to the Water Fund.
Okay.
And we'll take these in order. So to go over the Water Fund, currently, right now, there is no increase to the sales line for the Water Fund. Right now, the Water Department is going through, the utilities in general is going through a water rate study, a rate study to go over what those rates are going to need to be in the future. So I believe we'll be taking, we'll be bringing that study back to you guys, as well as a recommendation for increased revenue if we see that at that point. If you guys have any questions on that, I believe John or Shane are probably here to answer any questions related to the water rate study. If not, we can move on to the next line.
So I don't know, we talk about inflation, everything happens every year. I don't see how our sales can stay the same, Shane. I mean, if you want to come up here and 32.9, go into 32.9, and just tell me why you come up with that number. I'm not griping about it, I'm just saying, I would expect that number to go up a little bit.
We would normally too. Of course, this year, we're not, it's been, we've had a wetter July, and of course, normally our sales are, this is normally when we see the majority of our sales. And so we're probably going to see something very flat. And again, we're watching our budget very closely to make sure we're actually going to meet our projected revenues this year, based on this. As we're moving into next year, we chose to keep everything flat. We probably could see a small increase in sales, depending on, again, what the weather does to us as we move forward. But again, as we're looking at the rate study, and of course, wish it was, we were moving along a little faster, but with recent events, the study has kind of taken a backseat to some of the other things we've been working on. So as we move forward, again, we were just projecting a flat rate, just to.
It's a sandbag. It's a safe sandbag.
Yeah, it's just a safe, a safe place to stay. So that's where we are now. Of course, you know, we do have a lot of the projects that we have included in the rate study as we're moving forward to look at a lot of these things, and some of these future expenditures that we're going to need to be looking at when we start talking about securing additional water for the city as we're moving forward, and some of the other things that are in process, infrastructure, those type of things. And so, again, as we work through the remainder of this rate study, we will be bringing some recommendations for proposed rate increases as we're looking to move into the future. And then also, again, as we come into the end of this year, we'll kind of have a better determination of what our revenues look like. But again, right now, we're, you know, we still have, you know, 60 days. It could turn out really hot and dry, and we can meet our expected sales. But again, we're a little, we're running a little low right now.
I'll boil it by, that's your number, and that's the number that you put on the board, and you have a reason for that. It's a conservative, very conservative. So this is just a revenue. I mean, it's not an expense, so we're pretty good with any projection there. All right, thank you, Shane. Anybody having questions for Shane?
Mayor, you talked about inflation. Inflation on this slide has its impact on that O and M line.
Yeah, and there is inflation. And of course, we saw a huge increase in our electrical costs this year, especially at our plant, water treatment plant, a huge increase there. We are, again, continuing to see inflation. But again, want to be, again, very cautious on the sales side as we move through this process. And again, we will be bringing recommendations further into the year as we move forward.
Thank you, Shane.
The remaining increase, or the increase to revenue there of 682,000 is primarily due to the increase in interest. We're seeing an increase in interest from Lake Nazworthy Fund, as well as just an increase in interest to this fund in general. The personnel line, there's not, there's not an increase, there's a slight decrease there, and that's just related to moving some of those FTE distributions between these different utility funds. Operations and maintenance is going up 1.4 million. That is primarily due to building and maintenance and chemical and medical at the water treatment plant. There's also, I believe, an increase of 500,000 for contract services related to testing, and some testing that I think we do for TCEQ. There, the capital line there is decreasing, and that's primarily a decrease due to the increase in the operations and maintenance line there. And then other expenditures is decreasing related to debt service payment that is decreasing in the next fiscal year. Any questions on the Water Fund? On the Water Reclamation Fund, fees are budgeted flat here as well. The other line is also related to interest, and a little bit of an increase in auction proceeds as well. The personnel line there is increasing. That's mainly due to benefits, as well as, again, some of those movements of those personnel distributions. O and M is increasing as well. This is related to stationary equipment, building and grounds maintenance, and some indirect costs. And I believe those stationary equipment and building and grounds are related to the wastewater treatment plant, as well as a small increase to chemicals there at the wastewater treatment plant. The capital line is, again, a little bit of a decrease due to the increase in operations and maintenance. And then there is a small decrease in other expenditures related to debt service.
Is that the $274 line?
Yeah, the $274, yes.
That would just kill me. All right.
That's Tina's line.
That's Tina's line, down to the penny.
It's got a balance.
The next fund is the Stormwater Fund. There is a little bit of an increase to this fund for the fees, and I believe this is just because of the added properties, the added land that we're managing for stormwaters. The other line is decreasing mainly due to auction proceeds. We're predicting a little bit less auctions in this fund next year. The personnel line is increasing. That's mainly due to benefits, retirement and loyalty pay, those kinds of items. O and M is decreasing by 25,000, and a majority of that decrease is related to software maintenance. And then the capital line is increasing for some smaller items, basically moving some money around into land and improvements, not building. And then the other expenditures line is increasing mainly due to the indirect cost plan. Their indirect cost plan is around 9,000 of that $10,000 increase on the other expenditure line.
Shane, do you see any long-term effects from what's happened here during the flood that's going to affect this fund? That is exterior to what you can get back?
Yes, I mean, there are going to be, there are going to be additional costs, as Patrick's presentation up here earlier, and we start talking about acquiring these properties. And if they come online, of course, there's going to be routine maintenance that's going to have to occur on those mowing and maintenance and trees and different things like that. So of course, that is going to increase our expenses that this fund would oversee in those. And so, yes, the effects of today and what, and how we move forward in the future will definitely affect this fund. Of course, this fund, other than two years ago, we have not, we have not seen an increase in our fees in this fund, except for the one small 4% that we saw two years ago, since its inception in 2010. So this is a part of the rate study as well, the Stormwater Fund as well is part of the rate study. And so we will be bringing back some recommendations for this fund as well, too.
The revenue in this fund will be affected if you have properties which are no longer, can no longer be occupied. So if you have 100 houses.
Yeah, that is true. As we take, as structures are removed from these properties, that will, again, that lowers the area, the impervious area that we actually charge, or that our fees are based on. So our fees will actually be reduced as well. So, correct.
Any questions? If not, let's roll ahead, Jonathan.
The next fund is the Solid Waste Fund. There is an increase to the landfill fees, and that's mainly related to the contract that we have with Republic Services, those contract fees going up. And then the other line is 42, is mainly an increase to interest of 42,000. The personnel line here is decreasing, and that's also related to positions being distributed and being moved around a little bit. Contract services line is going up. That's being offset on the operations and maintenance line by a software maintenance decrease as well. The capital line is increasing, and that's mainly set aside mainly because of the increase in revenue. And then the transfers out is increasing primarily due to additional franchise fee transfer and some indirect cost adjustments as well. And then legal fees of $300.
Who puts that in there? That's a Tina line. I just look at that and giggle. Anyway, okay. So on the transfers out, the franchise fees, can you elaborate on that? I don't know if I've ever really understood that, and I hate to drag this out, but give me a 30 second.
Yes, sir. Similar to the franchise fees that we charge for telephone and TV and gas franchises, these utility funds also have a franchise fee that they pay to the General Fund. Those are based off 5% of revenues for both water, wastewater, and solid waste. So all of those funds pay a similar franchise fee, and that's kind of, the goal of that franchise fee is to cover the right-of-way maintenance that the General Fund has to cover for the most part.
Well, it's a million dollars, 1-1, and is it at risk? I mean, we talk about franchise fees like the peg fees. I mean, are we at risk anywhere of losing that one? Because it's hard to plug a hole, a million-dollar hole, and. And I don't think that's the case, but I'm just trying to make sure.
No, sir. The, the reason why PEG fees are down is because those fees are tied to the usage...
Streaming.
Yeah, streaming. So, as people move to streaming, those usage numbers go down.
I got that, but I just wanted, I want to make sure nothing at, at risk. We hate surprises.
Yes, so, the other thing that's in this transfers outline is, so, it's that franchise fee. There's also some indirect costs in this, but also in this line is a billing charge that the solid waste fund pays the water fund for actually putting that charge amount on your water bill every single month. So, customer service receives the benefit of, of billing out those charges as well.
Okay, I think we call that robbing Peter to pay Paul, but we're good. Taking care of your brother, I'm good. Thank you Jonathan.
The next fund here is the airport fund. There's an increase in leases and concessions of...
Just set aside 45 minutes.
There's, the increase here in the leases and concessions line is 350,000. The majority of this increase is related to the U.S. Customs and Hangar lease that I believe you guys saw a couple last month. And then there is a little bit of a decrease in the other line mainly related to interest fees or interest revenue. And then the personnel line is increasing slightly due to benefits. The operations and maintenance line is increasing mainly due to electricity. And then the capital line is increasing mainly due to the ability for us to collect some of those revenues in the leases and concessions line that should allow Justin to do some additional projects as well as fund some additional vehicle replacement. And then on the other expenditures line, that is a decrease for indirect costs of 11,000.
Justin, I know you've got some insurance concerns that are going to come maybe on some roofs. What does those play into the budget?
We're currently working with the city's insurance provider to assess six hangar roofs out at the airport. With this rainy season we've had, we've had significant water intrusion on several of these hangars. So, he's done two site visits so far. He had to take leave for a death in the family, so he's coming back, but we're expecting a written assessment on the roofs at any time. And then, you know, when I'm on the roof with him, one of the things that we're looking at is what's wind, what's hail damage and what's age? And that's something that we're going to have to navigate once we get this assessment. That's something that we need to have a conversation about when we're looking at these roofs and how do we get them repaired, replaced, what the conversation's going to be.
I think it's important to our vendors and our leasees that we, we just need to fix it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, how we point the fingers is irrelevant to me. I mean, just look at the fastest way to fix it to take care of our tenants.
Yes, sir.
All right. As far as I'm going to go down the airport.
If I get introduced, our airport director who recently got the South Taxi Way project off High Center, got the border protection contracts off High Center, we've been working on both those for years and Justin got them done. I think any difficult project we have along, have come along, Justin's the man.
I think we're going to have to make a bigger door in his office to get his head through it, but it's all right. That'll be two doors they have to fix. That's your nice job.
The next fund is the Costa DC Economic Development Fund. The first line there is sales tax revenue. This is budgeted in accordance with the same way that we budgeted for sales tax in the general fund, so this is going to be at 100% of our projected collections. That is going to be an increase of 200,000. And then we're seeing an increase, a decrease in interest for next year of 26,000. The operations and maintenance line is increasing 32,000. This is related to additional building and grounds maintenance needed. And then the Costa DC staff line, this is related to benefits for the staff out at the Development Corporation. City services is increasing 11,000 and that is due to the indirect cost plans, the results from the indirect cost plan. And then there's currently a placeholder in the marketing chamber of commerce line of 325,000. That is going to be used for the renegotiation of that contract with the chamber. And then the capital line is decreasing $5,000. And then future projects is decreasing and that's a function of the revenues plus the increased expenditures above that line.
Could you give me a breakdown on the...
So, I'm going to ask.
Hold on, she's asking a question right away.
Yes, on the chamber portion, could, can you give me a breakdown of that, of that 325,000 increase?
That contract, that is, that 587 is a placeholder. It's based on a proposal that they made and we are in discussions with them to get a better understanding of that breakdown at this time. We've got the placeholder in there because a budget needed to move forward, but we're continuing the discussion about what needs to be in that contract and what amount needs to be tied to that and we will be bringing that back to you at a later date.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that.
But the placeholder's at the 587, right?
Pardon me?
Yeah, we're budgeting the 587s.
The 587 was what they, what they proposed, up from the 262. And we are in discussions to determine, it included some step up in service levels and we're going through that with that, with them now. We anticipate being back in front of the Costa DC Board next week and before then, we've got a small group that's going to, we're going to talk to about that and we hope, we hope that lines the ducks up perfectly so they all go the way we need them to go.
I will, Mary, did that answer your question?
Yes.
I'm just going to put a little input on that. I mean, this group is dealing with people that are talking about projects that are two, three, four, five, six-year projects. And we have people that are coming here just because of some of that staff. Now, I'm trying to take a balls and strikes path here, but it's my point, we have, we have handcuffed them some the past couple of years. I would love to give them some rain and some rope to go out and do some things that they hadn't been able to do before. Just my input on that. I'd love to see that thing move forward. Any other questions on the Costa DC?
It is the highlight of the day.
Yeah. It is, it is. All right.
The next fund is the 72% portion of the sales tax that's dedicated to the Development Corporation. Again, this sales tax is budgeted in accordance with the same way that we budget the general fund. That's going to be an increase of 524,000. We have a slight decrease to interest on investments for next year. The main change on the expense side of this is a decrease in debt service related to ballot projects that the voters approved at the ballot. And then future projects is, again, that increase due to revenue as well as that decrease in that debt service payment.
Recall that this is restricted for items which were identified on the ballot. As those items have become complete, what the eligible uses for this side of Costa DC are affordable housing, which is restricted in its total amount per year. And the rest of it is restricted to water supply related issues. We typically call it long-term water supply. And what you see is as those other things decline against an increasing amount of revenue, that future projects line has begun to grow again. That's the, the amount of money, the amount of the revenue which is not yet programmed. It has not been assigned to a project or task because there isn't one. Its eligibility is for those water supply related issues. And so, we have talked to the board about that and they show a keen interest in partnering with the city on some of the issues that the city's facing related to water supply, water distribution, water treatment. I think, I think when Shane is ready for, to move forward with something, you'll find a partner in Costa DC for utilization of this money for its eligible purpose, which is money Shane would no doubt spend for water and infrastructure related items that were, that legal would tell us was eligible under the ballot language. So, the key there is, there's some resource here as you move forward with projects related to water supply and distribution. We have talked about distribution needs and we just need to keep Shane, keep Shane busy.
Love to, I mean, there, but there's, there's some things there, the water partnership, some Fort Stock, there's some things there that we, we have yet to see fruition and we continue to, to invest in it. I won't say divest, but we continue to invest in that. And I think at some point in time, maybe those people would like to see some clarity on what those expenses are and what they're for.
Well, those expenses will far outstrip anything we've got here, but the board did surprise us with their keen interest in seeing those initiatives move forward and how could they help? So...
All right, we're in it for the long game, but I think we all need to be lockstep and on the same page as we move forward. We don't need anything in between. Let's all get on the same page and let's all go forward.
The last fund that we have for you guys today, I'm going to skip over these hotel occupancy tax slides and jump to the civic events fund. This fund has an increase from the hot fund of 149,000. This is added here to make up for the revenue lost in the other line. The revenue that we're losing in that line is related to the Coliseum and this is as conservative of a projection that we can make as far as the revenue impact due to the renovations out there. Facility use fee is also decreasing a little bit related to the Coliseum renovation as well. The personnel line is decreasing 15,000 and that's mainly related to part-time salaries. We're taking some of that money and using it in the operations and maintenance line for things like electricity and some indirect cost increases as well. The capital line, we're also budgeting a little bit there in capital there in this fund this fiscal year.
When we look at the Coliseum as far as, I met with the executive director and the president of the association yesterday, not by choice, but accidentally at the same place for lunch. So, anyway, the table went from one to three. But I did bring it up that we need to sit down with them. We need to get it all lined out on when the construction would start. The original plan is to work on the exterior of the Coliseum, then move to the interior. So, I want to say that the effect on the 149,000 may be minimal in '26. They've gone, got together and get some timelines. And I would hope that we, we get that, and it's not staff's fault, it's, it's issue up there. There, it's all a first time to navigate through that. And now that I told them we're at the point where we need to sit down and figure out what some of those moves are, but I do think there's going to have to be a lot of infrastructure, I would say, moved from electrical to sewer and septic. And Joe, I think you're going to be important on this one as it's in your neighborhood before they even get close to starting exterior. But I just want to say, hopefully we can mitigate that 149 for you. You want to say something?
It's, yeah, at this point, we have cleared the schedule based on what they have given us as directive. And so, if they want to add back into that schedule, they can, but at this point, we were, we've stopped bookings and we've, we've cleared the schedule.
What we've done here on the city side is extremely safe. We'll see if we can't mitigate that and then maybe free up some funds for that one-time funding deal on this same date next year. Any further questions?
I have one. On the, I know that that just pertains to the Coliseum, but, and I understand that the Stock Show and Rodeo has, has taken over the marketing part of it and event reserving for the events, is that correct?
No, not until a renovation's complete.
There's not smaller things that we can do in there?
And I think that was the conversation we just had, there may be some smaller things we could do. This is a worst-case scenario, is losing 149,000, but if they can find smaller things to put back in there, they will, Ms. Coff.
And does that just pertain to the Coliseum building per se or is it the, any of the other buildings?
It's just Coliseum.
Like Red Barn and all that's not included?
No, that's, does not have anything to do with the revenue line, right.
They already operate those or we have another agreement, for instance, with the Red Barn with Angelo State University.
Okay.
And the rodeo, rodeo group.
Perfect, thank you.
Jonathan?
That's the last fund. So, we'll bring this budget back to you guys August 19th for the first budget hearing and then we'll bring it back for adoption on September 2nd.
So, before we wrap it up, let's go down the line. Tommy, any suggestions or directions or things you want to see specific?
No.
Councilman Self, Little Self?
This is good.
I don't have any recommendations. It's been very neat and interesting to go through and, yep, very good.
Harry Thomas, Daniel, any...
I'm good. I think this is a really good, this is, the first time we combined the two workshops together. I think it went very smoothly, so thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm trying to beat my 12:40 lunchtime under and out. Patrick? It's educational. It is. Anyway, I thank y'all for your patience on that. Karen?
I'm good, thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, keep your seat, this is going to take a minute. I'll just go down the line because it applies to different departments. Considering that the debris still is being picked up, the overgrowth of the vegetation throughout, is it prudent to have like a one-time contract with some outside vendors to help get us back on track and to get us into that systematic normal rotation as possible? The, one thing too, I've noticed, and I don't know if this has anything at all to do with the traffic accidents or anything, but it seems that every street that I'm on, the stop sign or the street sign is stopped with, or covered up with brush, you know, just the overgrowth of the trees. To me, that, that's not good. I know I've, in my former house, I got two tickets because of it. So, to get us back on track so that we can get back to the business of being there for the citizens, can we look at doing this just to get us, get us over the hump? CIP plan that really doesn't have anything to do with this part. As far as the grants, it's almost like every department has, we're always applying for grants. Does each department have their own, either designated or hired specifically for, for that? Do they have their own grant writer or do we, how is that done?
In a lot of cases, yes. The department has somebody who's handling the grants for them, applying for those grants. In some cases, I think with regards to some of the health grants, I think we have some pooled resources and I can't think of any other resources.
We have, the police department has its own grant writer as well, that's very, she's very experienced in, in that type of grant writing as far as public safety. And Public Works has their own grant writer as well, that's very, again, it's, it's very focused on the type of grants that they apply for. So, we do have it broken down to the different departments. As Jonathan mentioned, the health department, Sandra has hers as well. So, we, we do look at pretty much what's available to us and, and even determine whether they're even worth us going after because some of the requirements of those grants, you know this, Mary, they're pretty tedious, right? So, but we do have different groups that actually work within the city that look specifically for grants for their departments.
Okay. I'm certainly not trying to create any more work for anyone, but I didn't know as to how much time that some of these, excluding police, excluding the others that have their own designated grant writer, if there was an extra amount of time that is spent, that person in that group taking time out of their, out of their normal operations, would it be feasible or even worth looking at having a design, or a grant writer for the rest of the funds that, and that's all they did with the exception of, of police and Public Works? Is that even realistic to, and the point, the reason I'm trying, the reason I'm going there is however much time that takes for that person to do that, would that add up enough to actually give us some break with our other personnel? It's one of those deals, let's do more with less. It, it mainly, it's mainly a time-saving difference.
Mary?
Yeah.
Anyway, you're telling me.
The, did, did I, did you understand my question?
I did. And Mary, I, I think what we would see, I think we have maybe one position in the whole city titled grant writer and that's with Shane. They did just what you said. They were, they were applying, trying to get grants, they thought they saw a lot of opportunity and so they did kind of focus, create a position that was focused on that. But everybody else, it's, it's a sideline for them.
Right.
Sandra's name came up. Sandra's great at applying for grants. Sandra's the health director.
Right.
And so, it's a piece of what she does. So, it, it's a little bit all over when, when key people see there's a grant available, they'll make application for it. But in, in the case of the Public Works folks, they were seeing enough of them, they thought they could keep somebody busy doing that and supplement that work with some other work. So, there's already some of that thinking going on.
Good deal. Yeah, I'm just trying to make the most efficient use of our time. On payroll throughout, I would like to see, and I realize that asking for an additional line item is... line item is not practical even under GasBee standards. But, could we have in that main personnel line, the actual FTEs or part-time, just the actual people that are hired and onboard now? I understand the thing of placeholders, but could we not just, and this does go within GasBee standards, have just notes to the financial statements that say, this personnel thing, let's say, say it has $100,000 in it. Well, that's, contains 10 people instead of eight people which are currently hired. So, then, we could make a note to the financial statements that that looks like we're under budget, and that seems really great. But, to me, it's not apples and apples. I'd like to see a note to that stating that, no, this, we're under budget because this person hasn't been hired yet.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I, we, you're right. We currently show numbers of FTEs as they are approved. When it comes to analyzing if there's savings for that department based on they're under, under hired, they haven't hired up to that limit.
Right.
We do that through our monthly financials as well. We look at those personnel lines there and kind of judge them as a percentage of the budget for the year. So, that's kind of how we go through and identify those areas where a department may be under hired.
But, let's have clarity. Is that because of turnover, or is that because they are authorized and funded 10, and they are only filling eight?
In some situations, it's because there's turnover, and in some situations, they're, they've only hired up to eight. They've only been able to hire those eight personnel.
I'm only aware of one department that's doing that, Municipal Court. And I think they're filling all they're funded for. They may have account approval, but who else is not filling by intent, not filling all of their positions?
And one of the departments that we have is the Police Department. Right now, we haven't funded, we have them at 180 personnel, police officers, civil service personnel. But, we have not funded six of those positions. And so, you wouldn't necessarily see that in those financials.
In Mary's example, there is no savings there.
There would not be any savings there, but there are two, there are six authorized positions, and we can get that additional detailed information as well.
See, that's the key, Mary, is PD has that situation, and I think Municipal Court has that situation where they're authorized a higher number of positions than they're actually funded for, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And so, there's not a financial gap there. Any financial gap that exists has to do with turnover and the savings that exist while the job is vacant. There's not a design to budget, fund, and then not fill.
That's the key, what you said, budget and not fill.
Right.
That's the, that's the exact language I was looking for.
Every job that is funded is intended to be filled. We're not aware of any situation except on Costa DC.
Right.
I was talking out of both sides of my mouth. Except on Costa DC, where we have that director position funded, we don't intend to fill that in the next several months, maybe in the next several months. We'll talk about that. But, that's the only one that I'm aware of where it's actually funded, but we're, but the director or whoever's in charge doesn't intend to fill it.
Okay.
So, that, does that give you comfort that that gap?
It does. It does. And I wasn't suggesting anything other. It's just clarity or a little more transparency.
Well, it's a good question, because there are a lot of savings that they sweep, and that is totally related to turnover. And I think we've heard some talk from HR about keeping jobs filled and what they do to try to make that happen.
Okay. The other, and you know, we spoke about this yesterday, Michael, the, I'm a big proponent of making our assets work harder for us. And, you know, we're looking at maybe even having to purchase those properties that are in the floodplain and all, and that could be, you know, 12 million. I think I heard that number. Could we look at and identify unused city property that either, even if it's a green space or whatever, you know, that we're just mowing, but we're getting no benefit, no income certainly, because it's not on the tax rolls, but we're spending money and time maintaining those? I really think that we could, because some of these are in really prime locations. I would like to see us, I, well, I know that it would be worth it at least, because surely, we could find one piece of land, even if we sold it for a dollar, that's one more than we had. But, I would like to clean that part up. I'm not talking about anything on the river, just our unused land that's got no benefit to us other than mowing the weeds.
What we're dealing with today is enterprise and general funds. You're bringing up future agenda items?
Well, it may be.
And there's a bunch of people here that need to wrap up.
It may be that, but I'm geared on revenue and expense, and this is a revenue item that could be generated if we, if we look at that. And no, I understand, it's not specific to any one fund. I'm just trying to figure out a way to make money without hiring more people.
I think all of us would love to be out of the real estate business and many other things. But, as I was going to say, for the hearing today to keep it on legal, we need to stick with enterprise fund, the general funds. But, I think y'all just heard several future agenda items from Mary. And has anybody else got anything? I think we went all the way down. With that, at 1:35, I will call these budget meetings to a close. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.